What can I say?
Hey, don't go there.
Yeah, seriously.
Where are they at?
Her cup's missing.
Well, it's probably in the sink upstairs or something.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna search this place, I gotta tell you.
Probably in the janitor closet.
I'll keep on the lookout for it. I don't, I haven't seen it.
Stop the presses.
Yeah, really.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, this is the Grand Travers County Board of Commissioners' special meeting. Uh, today is April 24th, 2012. It is 8:00 AM. Uh, we're here for the, uh, round of interviews for candidates for the Grand Travers County Commissioners' position. Uh, we will call the meeting to order. Um, the first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Please.
President.
Commissioner Gilman.
Here.
Commissioner Henshaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumcoo.
Here.
Commissioner Max Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yep.
Commissioner Wielak.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Inman.
Here. Okay. Um, we are using yesterday's agenda. It was a combination, um, agenda for April 23rd and 24th. I would ask for a motion to, after the second public comment part, portion of today's meeting, to discuss next steps, um, after the interview.
So moved.
Support.
Seconded by Max Bauer. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Passed. Okay. So we will move on to first public comment. Seeing no members of the public or anyone else raising their hand, we will close public comment. We will now move on to the actual, uh, agenda, which is the round of interviews. Welcome, Jeffrey Naftow. Is that how you pronounce it? Uh, thank you for coming in. We appreciate your time and effort to make the appointment and give, and, um, having us visit with you this morning. We, um, had, uh, four interviews yesterday. We have two today, one after yours. Um, and they've been taking about two hours long. We have the same questions for all the candidates. Jen Seaman, who is Human Resource Director, um, does moderate the, uh, in terms of asking the questions. And then I will go to the board of commissioners and ask for clarification or any additional questions they would like to ask of the applicants. Um, and, uh, and then, um, preceding the second public comment, we'll discuss the timing strategy about how we want to, uh, approach the candidates and, um, the consensus process that we would like to use. So with that, we will start with the questions. Um, Jen, you have the floor.
Okay. Um, Grand Travers County has, is this on? Grand. Hello?
That sound?
I don't think so.
They were having problems and they-
Hello? Oh, there we go. Got it. All right. We're gonna- And Grand Travers County has 500 employees, a population of 87,000, and SEB of 5.2 billion. Tell us how your past and current experiences have prepared you to take on the role as administrator for Grand Travers County.
Well, I, I've worked in cities, uh, that, and a county that have approximately the same number of employees. So from the standpoint of employee base, um, I've done it before. We can do it again. Uh, from the standpoint of, uh, population, Lancaster County is about 75,000. It's not far off from y'all. Okay. Okay. Um, so I think from a population standpoint, I'm comfortable with, with Grand Travers and, and what I can bring to the table as far as that goes. Budget-wise, I, I've worked, um, the largest budget I've worked with is 167 million. I, I'm a, um, I guess an old-school manager, and I believe that if you can manage a city or a county, you can manage a city or a county. The processes are the same. The end results need to be the same as far as the services you provide. Um, and, uh, so I'm not at all concerned about my ability to provide good service to the residents of Grand Travers County if you select me.
Okay. Follow-up questions? All right. Uh, next question?
In many states, counties do not deal with budgets or administration of the courts. In Grand Travers County, our court system involves six elected judges, one for probate, two for circuit, three for district, three court administrators, and two other counties, being Antrim and Lelandau. Please describe your experience with judges and courts.
In Lancaster County, uh, their court system is funded, um, by the county as well.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, I think the, probably the biggest difference is that, um, the judges there are not elected. They're appointed by the state. Um, so, uh, I think that's probably the biggest difference from that perspective. I've interacted with both the clerk of the courts and the, the, um, staff of the judges. Not so much the judges themselves, because the judges really had very little to do with the, how do I say this? The, the operational side of things that, that we were responsible for. Um, we did get into staffing issues with, with judges and magistrates. Um, and we did get into, um, sort of personnel matters as far as making sure that their staff was following the county's personnel policies and those kind of things. And while I was in Lancaster County, uh, we finished up a, a brand-new courthouse for them. Uh, three stories, plenty of extra space. In theory, it'll last 75 years. Um, we'll see if theory holds out, but I, I probably won't be around for that. Um, and, uh, that was done through a sales tax measure, um, that the voters passed. So I have some experience with the courts. Um, obviously, my city's in Florida, not, not so much. But with the county in Lancaster, yes.
Okay. Questions?
Document imaging. Does your courts ever go through that? Have you had, uh, experience doing that? And how would you figure out it within a budget, how you would be able to do that for the rest of the, uh, organization?
Um, I have extensive experience with document imaging. And, um, I think the, uh, one of the issues that we dealt with the judges in Lancaster County on is that when they moved into the new courthouse, we did not want them taking up the whole courthouse with paper. We wanted them to digitize their records. Um, they were resistant, shall I say? I've used a, a number of software tools, um, a number of really good vendors, um, that can, uh, not only provide you with, from now till the future, digitizing of your records, but also vendors that can take your back records and digitize them as well, so that you end up with a much smaller paper footprint in your building and a much bigger access to the public to digitize records. Um, I've done that, I guess Surfside, my first town, is the only town that I haven't done that in. I've, I've had a hand in that in almost everywhere else I've been in some fashion or another.
Okay. Any other questions?
Follow-up on that, uh, how would you make sure there's a budget in order to be able to provide that service? Especially in declining revenues?
Right. But I, but I think that there is a, a return on investment from digitizing records that needs to be evaluated. Both space and people, um, and, and a, kind of an intangible return on investment, which is public access to the records. You know, one of the, uh, one of the things that sometimes happens is you're actually either using valuable space to store the documents or you're, um, maybe even renting space to store your documents, which means you've got an out-of-pocket that you don't need to have. So you have to figure in all of the savings that you're gonna have when you no longer have the paper records taking up space. You have to figure out how much time your staff is spending. Clerk's office is going through and having to look for documents every day. How much time are they spending doing that, whereas they could sit at their desk, pull it up in a nice quick record? Um, the, the company that I favored, um, down in Florida was a company called Opti-View. And the reason I favored them is their, their software tied into our base records management software that all the departments were using. And so when you pulled up a, let's say, a building permit record on the building permit software, you could access all of the building permit documents that had been digitized right from there. Makes life a whole lot easier. And if you're, if you've got access to those kind of records, say, in a, in a police car or sheriff's, sheriff's car, and you can pull up those records, you're saving time. You don't have to go out and have somebody go pull the records, or you don't have to go look for them. Um, so all those things I would consider into the return on investment. And so, yes, there is an upfront cost, but that upfront cost may be well worth it when you consider what you're gonna save down the road.
Okay. Next question?
In addition to the judges, Grand Travers County has seven other elected officials, including the clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, drain commissioner, surveyor, prosecuting attorney, and the sheriff. Tell us about your experience working with similar elected officials.
Again, Lancaster County had most of those. We didn't have a surveyor. And we didn't have a drain commissioner. But we did have, uh, an elected treasurer, had an elected coroner, had an elected clerk of courts, had an elected, uh, I'm missing a big one. Brain just locked on me. But, um-
Sheriff?
The, um, the trick with working with elected officials is they're not bound to you or bound by anything you want them to do. They will do what they want to do. So it's up to me as an administrator to work with them, to try and convince them that the things that we're doing as a county are the best things for them as well. And again, when I, when I touched on with the judges and, and personnel rules, all of their staff need to abide by county rules. So if, for example, um, you know, in Lancaster County, we had a magistrate that did not wanna pay, um, overtime to her staff. She just figured that she could work them whenever she wanted to work them. And we had to convince her of the rationale for why it was a good idea to follow the rules and do the right thing. It's not, you can't do it heavy-handedly. You have to partner and work with them. And, um, it's, it's not much different than, um, working with a council or a board and explaining what your, what your ideas are and why they're the best ideas, and then hoping that they go along with it. And I think we were successful at that in Lancaster.
Follow-up? Next question?
Grand Travers County has 13 separate bargaining units, all with different contracts, 10 of which expire on December 31st of 2014. Please tell us about your experience negotiating labor contracts, including negotiating multiple labor contracts at one time.
Um, I've been negotiating labor contracts since my first city. Uh, way back in, I guess, 88 would have been the first time I negotiated a labor contract. Um, I've done it one at a time, and I've done it as a group in Hallendale Beach. Uh, all three unions went at the same time. Um, and they went every two years. So just about the time you were getting things settled in and following the new contract, you started negotiating on the next contract. I've not only been real successful at it, I actually like it, which people tell me makes me crazy. But, um, I do like negotiating contracts with unions. I think it's a, if you do it right, it can become a real win-win. It can be a win for the employees, but a win for the, for the governing body as well. Um, we have needs as a governing body that, that we have to, to do. We don't wanna break the bank. We wanna make sure that we provide the best services. We wanna make sure that we, um, take care of our residents with those services. The employees have needs. Their needs are usually either monetary or benefits or, or those kind of working conditions kind of needs. The trick is figuring out how you're going to marry those two together, and I think I've been real successful at doing that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Wielak?
Have you ever had the experience dealing with, in Michigan, we have what we call 312 arbitration. It's binding arbitration between the counties and the sheriff's office.
I've had binding arbitration. I've had, um, non-binding arbitration, plus the whole grievance process, um, that's usually involved in union contracts. I've done all of those. I've sat at the table representing management on those issues. I, I had a, uh, police union attorney just flustered to death because it, because he couldn't get what he wanted out of me at an arbitration setting, and we ended up winning that arbitration setting. Um, so, yeah, I've been, I've done it and, and been real successful at it.
Next question?
Transitioning into the budget, uh, but some budget questions now. Currently, Grand Travers County has an annual operating budget of 138 million and budgets one fiscal year at a time. Please tell us about your past experience managing budgets, including managing budgets covering multiple fiscal years.
I haven't managed a budget covering multiple fiscal years. However, what I have done is some serious strategic planning, capital improvement planning. Um, and those span, um, five, 10 years. And so what, if you're, if you're doing them seriously, what you're doing is you're trying to implement those into your budget. So your budget, while it may only be a year-to-year budget, the goals that you've set as part of your strategic plan, the capital improvements that you've set as part of your 10-year capital improvement plan, are incorporated into that budget and become a long-term budgeting process, even though it's not the whole budget. As I said, I, I've, I've had, um, budget actually slightly bigger than Grand Travers. I've had, uh, um, some budgets that are significantly smaller. Juno Beach and Surfside come to mind as much smaller budgets. I think that, in a perfect world, um, and there is no such thing probably, my bu, my ideal budget involves some upfront work before you actually start the budget, which is involvement of stakeholders, involvement of the citizens, um, involvement of staff, so that everybody's issues, everybody's concerns, everybody's, um, ideas on what to do with the budget are known upfront. Then, taking all that information, and again, this goes back to sort of to strategic planning, 'cause this is what you do with a good strategic planning, uh, is you gather all that information, you come up with your strategic plan. I then wanna take that information and, and use it to build my budget. And then provide a series of public meetings where the budget can be discussed by the public and, um, softened or, or manipulated in order to make it so that it meets the needs of the majority of the people as much as possible. Ideally, I'd also like to have performance measurements. Performance measurements allow you to evaluate the actual services that are being provided, compare yourself to others of like size and like shape, um, and determine how you're doing. So for example, if you are, if it's costing you $100 to fill a pothole, and everybody else that's your size is filling a pothole at $50, you've got an issue, and you need to address it. And so the performance measures allow you then to look at your budget, see how you're doing certain things, and, and adjust them accordingly. Or maybe even decide you don't need to provide a service because of the fact that you can't do it cost-effectively. Maybe there's a better way to do it some other fashion. Um, so ideally, I'd like to have all of those things. Good strategic planning, involvement of all the stakeholders, and performance measurement to come up with a really good budget.
Okay. Comments? Next question?
As the county administrator, what would you anticipate your involvement to be throughout the year in managing and evaluating our budget to actual performance?
Kinda just touched on that a little bit. I, I mean, I think if you're doing performance measurement, then what you're doing is you're actually looking at the services you provide on a continual basis. You're, you're identifying what are your key services? What are the services that are, they're nice to have, but they're not necessary to, to the operation or to the needs of the residents? Um, and you're looking at how you provide those services, what costs for providing those services. Are you providing those services in the same way that your peers are? And can you provide those services in a better fashion? Can you do it differently, better? Maybe outside people, maybe, you know, reorganize? There's all kinds of different ways you can look at it, once you know how you're providing that service. As the administrator, I can't manage the day-to-day operations of each department. That's why I have professionals. But what I can do is kinda keep an overview of the services. Are we on track with where we think we should be? If we, if we make a, if I've got a $100 pothole and I know I wanna bring it down to $50, and we make changes, are those changes working? I wanna know that. I wanna make sure that they're, that the changes that we're making are effective and, and are accomplishing the goals.
Okay. Questions? Next question?
How would you evaluate economic and other trends in the market relative to their impact on our overall financial position?
In, in the current economy, it's not just what's happening locally that impacts everything. National trends, statewide trends, all of that impact, um, they impact everything from your, from your ability to get on to finance, uh, to, um, to how much you should be paying for services, to how much you should be paying for staff. Um, all of those trends, um, used to be that you could look at a local market. You could be very local, very focused, and very specific, but nowadays, um, you can't. You have to move beyond your local, your local area. Um, and I think that, you know, one of the things that I've liked to do throughout my career is look at where I see, where I see trends around me and how those trends are going to come in onto me, close in on me. An example in, in Lancaster County is that, um, Lancaster is kind of the, the last one to get changes in the area. There's Charlotte just north of them. There's Rock Hill to the west of them. Um, those areas are, are, have grown faster than Lancaster. And so the changes that have come to Charlotte and to Rock Hill are coming to Lancaster. They're just coming slower. So you kinda have to, have to big-picture and look out and, and get a feel for what's going to hit you, because it's already come to your neighbors. It will come to you at some point. So I try and do that as best I can.
Okay. Um, I'd like to go back to the previous question just for one second. Regarding evaluating our budget and the actual performance. Have you ever got involved and engaged in?
Larry, can you talk a little closer to your microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Um, with regard to the previous question, uh, if I could have a clarification on that. And that was, um, how you would anticipate your involvement throughout the year in managing and evaluating our budget to actual performance. Have you ever, um, engaged in, um, a prioritization method of budgeting where if revenues were trending down or trending up, uh, the prioritization of, of the reductions or where you would add to certain areas, um, along with outcome performances?
I, my preference is not to adjust the budget based on revenue trends necessarily. Um, because I think ultimately it's about what services you need to provide and what services you can provide based on the revenue that you've got coming in. And whether you can adjust those services to, um, reflect your revenues that are coming in. Obviously, you have, if you have a limited revenue stream, then you, then you have what you have as far as dollars to pay for the services. But if you have a good idea of what services you're providing and how much those services cost, you can adjust your services, still provide the same service level, and yet have reduced revenue. Um, and I think, I know, I'm pretty sure I have it in my resume that, um, in Juno Beach, we lowered the millage rate, but I still was able to add services. Because I adjusted, evaluated some services, one service, uh, building services I actually outsourced, um, in order to not only save money, we, we made money. We're making $100,000 extra a year. Which in a small town like Juno Beach is a big thing. Um, so I'd rather not adjust based on whether revenue projections are up or down, but, but keep an eye on the services themselves and provide those services in the best way possible, given the revenue limitations.
Okay. On that second part, did you, have you gone through a prioritization process on the budget?
We have. Um, we, in Lancaster County, that was following their strategic planning process. That's what we sat down to do about, with their budget, was to try and prioritize which services and which things were needed and necessary.
How did you do that?
Um, in Lancaster County, it was the administrator, the finance director, and myself. There was really only three people. And they, they really went in, we really went in and, um, looked at what the goals of the, of the council were, what their priorities were, and attempted to make sure that those priorities were the ones that got funded and other things that were not a priority. Um, for example, capital was not a priority in their strategic plan. So capital ended up being cut significantly in the budget, uh, the amount of money that was going to capital. That was their choice, uh, but that was how we addressed that priority for them. So, yeah, we, I mean, it was, it wasn't, the better way to do it is to have all the departments involved in that priority addressing. And, and let them identify what areas they can adjust and how they can adjust them without kinda mandating it. But the administrator in Lancaster County preferred top-down management, so that's what happened there.
All right. Comments, questions? All right, we'll move on to the, the next question.
Jeff, what do you believe is the purpose of fund balance, and would you consider it appropriate to use fund balance?
The purpose of fund balance in, is for, twofold. And I'll, the first, first thing is for emergency purposes. In Florida, we knew about emergencies regularly.
Hurricanes every year.
And so our fund balance in, in, uh, in Juno Beach was 50%.
Wow.
Which is very high. But it was very high because they're right on the ocean, and one good storm, and you, you need, you need six months to get yourself going again. So we, we had a 50% reserves there. Um, so the first use of reserves, fund balances, um, for emergency purposes. The other use of fund balance is, um, for those things that are necessary but not planned. For example, we were talking about digitizing records. If you make a decision as a, as a board that you want to, um, eliminate some of your paper and go back and digitize some of your old records, there's a, there's a hard cost involved in that. And you may decide that that hard cost is valuable to the county, and so you wanna do it. But you're not having any money in the budget to handle that, so you need your fund reserves, um, in order to, your fund balance in order to, um, cover that cost, so that you can get it done without waiting to do it. Um, so you can use it for those purposes. In my opinion, what I like is the bigger the fund balance, the better. Um, I think that, up to a certain point, I mean, we never exceeded 50% in Juno Beach, but, and most of my fund balances in Florida were around the 20, 25% range.
Okay.
Um, but I think that you, you want a big fund balance. You wanna have the capability, if something comes up that you really want to do or really need to do, that you can do it. That you don't have to wait a year to, to budget for it, um, that you can go ahead and, and take that funds and then replenish it in the next budget year. Um, so bigger is better for me in fund balance terms.
All right. Mr. Richardson?
So what kind of strategy would you advocate in, uh, when you have a series of years, as we've had, of, you know, declining revenues? Would you try to, you know, absorb some of the declining revenues, you know, from your fund balance in hand? Or would you still try to maintain the same fund balance?
I would try and maintain the same fund balance. I, um, going, going into debt and decreasing fund balance are two options for balancing a budget, but they're not two that I recommend. They're, they're hurting you in the future. And, um, unless there's no other option, no other way to do it, no other way to either increase revenues or streamline services, increase your efficiency and effectiveness. If there's no other way to do it, that's one thing. But as long as there are other alternatives, I would not like to do either decreasing fund balance or, um, increasing debt service. And I'll go back to Juno Beach, which is, obviously, it's small, but the, but the principle is the same. Uh, we kept our fund balance where it was, even though we reduced millage, which meant we reduced revenue. Um, and even though we increased services. That was the goal. We wanted that.
Follow-up question? If you had a goal of, a minimum of 20% in Juno Beach for a fund balance, and you had 25% actual, and you had an anticipated one or two-year, uh, trending down, would you use that differential to, as, as, um, something in a short period of time to evaluate how, um, the stabilization of the economics would work until you got down to 20%, then make the hard decision? Or would you just make the hard decision right then?
If I, if, if the evidence is pointing to the fact that revenues are gonna be tight, and that money may be needed to, to cover those revenues- and that money may be needed to cover those revenue losses, I might hold it. But I think I would balance that against the, in particular, infrastructure needs. It costs big dollars to manage your underground lines. It costs big dollars to manage your roads. And if you have extra reserves and you can afford to use them to take care of your infrastructure needs, that's 15, 20, 25 years of value that you're getting for those dollars. And so I would look at both ways, whether I think that the revenue situation is going to be so drastic that it's better to save the money for it, or whether there are infrastructure needs that we could do that would make better use of the funds and give longer value, longer return.
Okay. Any questions? Next question.
We are currently 50% funded with our defined benefit pension plan. Tell us about your experience with an unfunded pension liability and its impact on annual contribution requirements and discuss the budget consequences as well.
Back in the good old days, when the stock market did everything you wanted it to do, all your pension plans were nicely funded. And all of the defined benefit plans in the cities I worked for were very nicely funded. As the market started to be volatile, that changed. And a number of cities, especially in South Florida, that had provided really rich benefits to their employees, found themselves unable to cover the cost of paying for those benefits down the road because they weren't making 10% a year in their stocks like they used to. A couple of cities down there actually took out indebtedness in order to pay for their pension costs. I never had to do that. The lowest percentage that any of my defined benefits plans ever got to was about 82, 83. And of course, that has gotten worse over time and I've been out of Florida for a little while. Lancaster County used the state plan. So we did not have to worry about a pension plan and funding it, not in the same manner. We just paid whatever the state said you have to pay. I think that, and this kind of goes back to negotiations. When you sit and negotiate with a union, they want the best benefits they can get. They want what everybody else has. If A, B and C have a drop plan, they want a drop plan. If A, B and C have a 3.2 multiplier, they want a 3.2 multiplier. Well, the problem with all of that is that each one of those added benefits to the pension plan costs money. And it not only costs money this year, it costs money next year and every year. And usually it costs money to a greater extent as years go by and more and more people get into the plan and use that benefit. So the trick when you're negotiating a contract is to negotiate for the current employees, not negotiating for people that won't even be working for you 10 years down the road, or five years down the road. And so you try and manage those pension benefits through the labor negotiation process so that you don't wind up in a position where your pension benefits are so rich and the market isn't keeping up and your pension funding is going down, down, down. And I guess from a practical standpoint, I've been on both sides of that as far as seeing pension plans go where they don't need to go. In Howlandale Beach, our police union was the first union in Broward County to get a drop, a deferred retirement option plan. We argued strongly with our commission that they should not do that. And we argued strongly that unlike the union's opinion, it was cost neutral. It was not cost neutral. And we also argued strongly that we'd be setting a precedent for the rest of the county because nobody else had it. The commission, in an election year, decided that they needed the police support more than they needed staff's recommendation and they put it in. The end result was significant cost to the city down the road. And as predicted, every other police department in Broward County has a drop now. Every one of them pointed to Howlandale Beach and said, "We need it." So I've seen that happen and I've been involved in it where pension benefits start getting out of hand and your fundedness goes down. But I've also been involved in contracts that have managed that process and kept the benefits at a level that is responsible and allows the pension itself to be funded properly.
Commissioner Wielak.
I guess the follow-up on that is just a little bit of an explanation of how we get to 50%. And that we got there because 10 years ago, we made the decision that no new employees would get defined benefit. They're all on defined contribution. As a result of that, MERS, the company that manages our retirement program, put us on an accelerated amortization program. So instead of paying it in 30 years, every year it gets two years shorter. So we are now down to about 14, 15 years that they expect it to be all paid off. So that's why we have this 50% issue. It's not that we made necessarily bad decisions. It's just, you know, and the fact that regularly, because the number of employees we have on defined benefit is getting smaller every year is through people who retire. We have less people paying into that program. So that's why we're here. So, you know, I'm just compelled to tell you how we got to 50%.
I appreciate that. That's a different.
Because it's completely different than the fact that we just didn't do it right, you know.
Commissioner Richardson.
Could you explain the drop?
Yes. The deferred retirement option?
Yes.
It's a lovely program. What it says is, and I'll tell you what it says and I'll tell you what the theory is and I'll tell you what happens in practice. What it says is that when you reach your normal retirement age, it has to be normal retirement age, either whether it's 25 years of service or age 65 and 10 years of service, whatever the normal retirement age is, you are allowed to quote-unquote retire. They take your pension and start paying it to you into a fund that earns interest. You no longer contribute to the pension plan, in theory. And then, at the end of no more than five years, which is the usual length of a drop, at the end of that time, you are supposed to leave employment and you collect the money that's in this account for you plus interest as a lump sum. The advantage to the employees supposedly that they get to keep working. The advantage to you is you get to do succession planning and you've got five years to figure out who's going to fill their spot when they leave. And you don't have to contribute anything to the pension plan, so therefore you're saving some money on that each year while they're still working. The reality is that some of them don't want to leave at the end of their five years and try and work out arrangements whereby they can stay. Some pension plans have set it up that you still contribute during the time of the drop. South Carolina is one that does that, which is weird, but they do. And what you have is, even for those that are leaving within that five-year period, you have short timers. And some people, when they know they're leaving, they work hard, they work the way they've always worked, they do what they're always supposed to do. But some people in that situation become not your ideal employee. And it becomes hard to manage them because their opinion is, "I'm already retired. What are you going to do to me?" And you get a lot of that. You get way more of it than they ever indicated would happen from that program. And then, of course, the whole idea was it was sold, it was cost neutral because you would get rid of higher-paid employees after a certain amount of time and you'd be able to hire in younger, newer, lower-paid employees. But the reality is that as costs go up, as base salaries go up, by the time they leave, you're not saving that much money and you are paying more money into the pension plan to cover their benefit and their interest. So it's not a real good, from a management standpoint, it's a terrible option.
So after the five years, I mean, I don't mean to waste a lot of time on this, but after the five years, they still did the pension that was.
They did, that's right.
It's not like they get to count the last five years and recalculate the pension.
No, they're not supposed to count the last five years.
But they've basically doubled up in four years.
That's correct. That's correct.
There was something like that we had.
Yeah, we called it early retirement.
Yeah. MERS allowed them to come back.
Yes, they still exist.
And retire and then come back. But just a quick question. The current Michigan legislature is looking at the possibility of having county governments and other municipality governments have an option currently. It's not an option, but to have an option to bond the portion of their unfunded defined benefit program. And since MERS is on an accelerated amortization schedule because they're losing less members, they need more income coming in. The legislature is looking at a bill that will allow counties the option to bond out unfunded portion, for example, 20 years or whatever, 25 years, to stabilize their funding portion of their budget for that defined benefit program. Would you or would you not favor doing that?
On first blush, I probably wouldn't, mainly because I don't believe in picking up indebtedness, debt service, if I can help it. That being said, though, in a case like you all have where you're phasing out that program and you've got a set end date and a set amount of money that you need and you've got all that kind of figured out, if you can work the bond so that it ties in with that end date and you manage that process so that it's not like there's debt service for 20 or 30 years that doesn't apply to anything that's long gone, then it might make sense.
Okay.
I'd want to look at that a little closer.
All right, okay. Fair enough. Anyone? Next question.
Grand Tauras County has financial oversight over a few entities in the county with which we share a tax ID, such as the Grand Tauras Pavilions, the Road Commission, Department of Public Works and the airport. Tell us about your experience with providing financial oversight to multiple entities.
In Howlandale Beach, we had financial oversight of our community redevelopment agency. And in Lancaster County, we had financial oversight over a number of kind of small agencies. I don't know how big the agencies that you mentioned are, but working with the agencies is, to me, is very much like working with an elected official. You know, they have their own plan, their own priorities. They're trying to do what they feel is best for their organization, for their agency. And yet, you have to provide the money to do it. And so you want to kind of have a feel that they're doing things the way you want them to do it. So it becomes that kind of trying to build that team, work that partnership as opposed to trying to say, "You do this because we want you to do this because it's our money." You can do that, but it doesn't build good relations and it's not really the best way to do it. In the CRA in Howlandale Beach, it was different in that we used the CRA as a means of developing some of our lower-income areas. And because of that, it wasn't so much having to worry about what they were doing because they were doing what we wanted them to do. It was really a matter of the commission down there setting the goals for what they wanted the CRA to do and the CRA kind of following along. So it was a little different.
Okay. Questions? Next question.
Rising healthcare costs have a significant budget impact. Tell us about your experience managing rising healthcare costs.
Oh, when I first started, you could go out for an RFP for health insurance and you'd get six companies and they'd outbid each other and you'd get a two- or three-year contract and you'd be set for two or three years and it was all good for the employees and it was all good for the city. That has changed. The competition is down. Sometimes you go out for an RFP, you get one or maybe even two people to compete. And the costs are going through the roof, probably average 10% to 15% every year increase, whether you like it or not. A lot of it is dependent on your employees' use of the healthcare, which you have no control over. And of course, you have the healthcare because if your employees get sick, you want them to be taken care of so they can come back to work. And yet, the insurance company is charging you more because your employees got sick. A trend that's going on in Florida is bringing in wellness centers so that your employees can get their basic physicals, basic healthcare. If they come in and they're sneezing or they're coughing, they can go to the wellness center and they can get themselves taken care of by usually an RN or an LPN. And it alleviates the need for them to go to a doctor. It alleviates the need for them to take time off from work. It alleviates the need for you to pay for the services of that doctor, which are usually more expensive than having your own wellness center. So a number of places in Florida are taking that route to managing their healthcare costs. I think that the other thing that I've seen that's very effective in managing healthcare costs is just general wellness initiatives, whether it be gyms, whether it be walk-in clubs, whether it be diet support groups, whether it be just health fairs, all of those kind of things. The more that you encourage and facilitate wellness among your staff, the less your healthcare costs are going to be because they're basing it on how much your staff uses those doctors and those facilities. So I think that's the ways that I try and maintain healthcare costs as best as I can.
Okay. Questions? Next question.
Now we're going to go into more leadership, management supervision. Define leadership in one sentence.
Excuse me.
Oops.
Excuse me. We've got two more.
Sorry. Wrong page. I crossed off the two on the wrong page. Sorry. We'll get to leadership in two questions. Tell us about your.
I was just about to raise my hand. Thanks, Dave.
I'm sorry. It was on the wrong page. Tell us about your experience recommending and executing public policy. How do you find balance with property owner rights and the desire for central planning?
I think that it's hard to balance the desires of the property owner with the desires of the community to look a certain way and to feel a certain way and to maintain that community's character. When I got brought into Juno Beach, I was brought in specifically for that. They're a small town, mainly single-family, not particularly big lots, 100-foot wide lots. And they had houses that had been built in the 50s and 60s and 70s. And you can visualize that those houses are not that big. They're your normal 2,000-square-foot house, maybe somewhere around there. Most of them were one-story. Most of them had large yards, as large as you can get on a 100-foot lot. And what was happening before I got there was that developers were coming in and putting up the, I use the term even though I don't particularly care for it, but McMansions. They were putting them up on the same small lots right next to these original, single-family homes and dwarfing them. And people were complaining that their neighbors would stand out on their second-floor balcony and look down into their pool and their bathroom. And it was just, you know, it was getting out of control. That council brought me in specifically to gain that control back. And that meant having to tell certain property owners that you can't build like that just because you want to build like that. You have to maintain the character of the community. Doesn't mean you can't have a two-story home. Doesn't mean that you can't have, you know, the amenities that you want to have. It doesn't mean that you can't have a bigger house than 2,000 square feet. But it does mean that you have to fit the character of the community. So the first thing that I had to get council to do was decide what the character of the community was. And once they decided that, then it was a simple matter to take the code, the zoning code, and say, "Yes, you can do this because it's in the zoning code, but you have to meet the character of the community at the same time." And we actually. And we actually had a test case that went to court and the property owner lost. They had to follow not only the straight zoning, but they had to follow the character of the community. And we were able to show character of community by doing evaluations of the houses around the lot that wanted to be developed. What size are the houses? How tall are the houses? How much yard space do they have? Is it 50% of the lot? How much of that is available there? And we would evaluate everything in that area in order to show, if you put this in, you totally do not meet the character of that part of the community. Now, if they went into an area where some of these McMansions had already been built, chances are they'd get to put another big house up because the character of that particular area of the town had already changed. So it became incumbent upon a developer or a person who had a lot and wanted to develop it to turn around and say, yes, this meets the character. No, it doesn't meet the character. And the way we set that up was we implemented a development review process. I sat on every development review board meeting to make sure that not just planning's point of view, not just building's point of view, not just fires' point of view, not just sanitation's point of view, not just police's point of view, but the council's point of view was represented at the table with the developer. So the developer knew, if you build this, here's what you're going to have to do. Here's the rules you're going to have to follow in order to build here. It took the test case and it took six months, maybe to a year, to get the developers to really understand what we were doing and why we were doing it. And pretty much after that, nobody really fought. Nobody had an argument. Nobody did, you know, had any real issues with it because you could develop. You just had to develop in a certain style, different than just putting down the biggest thing you could put down close to the property line as you could put it. And so we were successful at doing that.
Yeah, I think the purpose behind it was a philosophical kind of a question because we have, Michigan has home rule and the townships and cities, villages have zoning and planning authority. We were just kind of a partner in terms of education and those kinds of things as a tool.
Well, I do believe that this question actually is a result of the opposite issue, though. What we have in our community is the fact that we went through a very extensive public process, made a decision to decommission and breached three dams on the Boardman River. And what's going to happen is people who had lakefront property no longer have lakefront property.
Right.
And, you know, so then the discussion becomes, what have we done to their property rights? You know, because their property has significantly changed. And, you know, they may have had 100-foot of frontage on Boardman Pond, which was a man-made impoundment. Multiple attorneys have given them opinions that they do not have riparian rights on a man-made impoundment, but they still don't believe that.
Right.
And the fact is, when the river is, where the river is going to end up, there's not going to be all these hundreds of feet of water frontage, along with the fact we're going to have a very extensive process in taking out the dams. And we're probably going to need a conservation easement along the river in order to deal with it besides. So I think we have the opposite situation. You have the situation where people came in to our property and now they want to build something that doesn't match the character. You know, what we've done here, what we've talked about, is taking property that people assumed they had lakefrontage and the lakefrontage went away.
You know, I've been involved in eminent domain cases in Florida. Not because of the Supreme Court ruling, you don't see it that much anymore. But so I'm familiar with what you're describing, which is you're taking someone's use of their property away or you're actually taking their property either way. And what ends up happening is you have to pay a fair market value for the property that you're taking, for the use of the property. And you have to decide whether the public good has benefited more than the individual good of them having the property the way they had it. It's not an easy decision. I was not a popular guy in Hallandale Beach when we went after a piece of church property near our sewer plant. The church was not happy that we were trying eminent domain to take their property. But we needed it. We were putting in a deep well and an injection well and we had to have the land. We just, I mean, we had to. Otherwise, we weren't going to be able to provide treatment. So I'm familiar with that, the opposite.
Mr. Gillman? Just so I can clarify Commissioner Wheellock's point, just so you understand fully the situation. The property, there's little argument about, nobody's taking anybody's property. The property is the land between what used to be the water line and what is now the water line. And it is, nobody's arguing, the county owns the property. We own the property. Now, the argument for some folks is that it is something they had assumed for decades, for generations for some, that was their riparian rights. And that, so just to clarify what the situation is, I just-
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks for that clarification. Moving on. Next question.
Aside from budget issues, name one or two of the most critical issues you see facing counties today.
I think that home rule is an issue that counties are having trouble with right now. In general, what used to come from the federal government is not coming. And what used to come from the states is not coming. And the place it winds up is the county, which means that the county is having to make up for services and dollars that they never had to do. And it's putting a real strain on counties. And there's almost nothing that we can do about it because the politicians in the higher places than us don't really care. They don't have the money and they're not going to spend it and they're going to push the services back down to the lower level. So I think that's one. I think staffing is another one. It becomes very difficult to staff appropriately when resources are so tight, so thin. Do you give up on the better candidate simply because they need 10,000, 15,000, 20,000 more than the candidate that you can get for the price you've got offered? And sometimes that works out. Sometimes the people that you hire at less money work out fine. But I think that sometimes, especially in upper-level positions, for example, I hire a police chief. I want my police chief to be the best police chief I can get. And if that means that I can't start him at the minimum salary because that's not what's competitive wherever else he could go, I got to really consider giving him a little more money so that I get the best police chief and not just get my third choice who happens to be able to work for the amount of money that I put down that I have. And so I see staffing as an issue moving forward because governments are so tight financially right now. So.
Okay. Questions? All right. Next question.
All right. Now, we're ready for leadership. Define leadership in one sentence.
I should have been thinking about this. Leadership is the ability to show people a direction to move forward.
Okay. Next question.
What is the most difficult management problem with employees that you've had to face and how did you deal with it?
Anytime you're having a management problem with an employee, it's difficult. At all levels and for all reasons. I guess I'll use Lancaster County as an example. The EMS director and the assistant director had been put on notice about a year and a half before I started that they were improperly paying EMS staff. They were paying them under the 7K schedule of the Fair Labor Standards Act, which applies to police and fire. It does not apply to EMS unless they are a joint EMS-fire department. So they had been put on notice and the director and the assistant director had been, I'll say politely, dragging their feet. But they were doing more than that. They were actively resisting making the change that needed to be made. And the reason for that is the change that needed to be made was paying the employees on a 24-hour schedule, which meant their hourly rate was going to go down significantly, which meant the amount of overtime they would be making was going to go down significantly. They did not want to anger their staff. They did not want to be the bad guys, so they just let it go. When I came on board, our attorneys, our labor attorneys, pretty much said, go in there and fix it. Don't wait anymore. But before we could do that, we attempted for almost the first six months that I was there to get the director and the assistant director to do what they needed to do. And they kept dragging their feet. So ultimately, we went in and we did what we needed to do without them and relieved them of their duties. It wasn't fun. I was the new guy in town and I don't like getting to go stand before people and tell them, your hourly rate's going down, but we're paying you the right way finally. And I don't like telling them that their two supervisors will no longer be there. But it needed to be done because you can't have those kind of things going on. And realistically, if the federal government had decided to come in and start implementing fines, I think it's $10,000 a day for fines on those kind of violations. And I don't think that would have been really good. So we addressed it and did what we had to do. I think that every place I've been, I've had to have disciplinary issues dealt with. In Surfside, it was lifeguards. In Hallandale Beach, it was some public works and some parks and recreation people. In Juno Beach, it was the city clerk, the town clerk. It seems like everywhere, there's somebody that just doesn't want to do what they're supposed to do. And when that happens, you give them every opportunity. You tell them what you need. You give them their responsibilities. You provide them time and training if necessary. You give them every opportunity. And then when it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You've got to move on. And you can't have that kind of dead weight that's dragging the organization down. In Juno Beach, I gave the clerk two years to straighten up. And after two years, I just, I had to do something. I couldn't keep letting it linger and it was affecting the organization. So, you know, I've done, like I said, I think all of these are difficult. I don't think any of them are easy. Just each one has its own peculiarities and complexities.
Jeff, could you speak up a little bit? I'm in difficulty hearing you. Maybe raising the microphones would help.
I'll try.
Or just raise your voice a little.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Commissioner Gillman?
Couple parts, actually. First, would you have called that then insubordination for the two that she had relieved?
We called it insubordination and we called it a failure to follow orders. And I think we used one other term in the discussion. We ended up letting them officially retire rather than firing them. One was already eligible for retirement and one was soon to be eligible, close enough that we weren't going to give him an opportunity not to. And I've done that before. I mean, my preference is not to actually have somebody on their record have fired. I'd rather not, if I can help it. I'd rather give you the opportunity to resign or retire and move on to happier hunting grounds. But, yeah, that was one of the things we used.
And we can sympathize. Now, as far as, as far as, as you gain experience, do you find it easier to recognize some of the inevitability in situations like this?
I do. I also find that as I've gone through my years of government, I've become a little more politically intuitive. And so, for example, the reason that the clerk in Juno Beach lasted two years was because she had been there 10 years before I got there and was well-liked by many, many people, including a number of council members. And before I tossed her out the door, and just for the record, I mean, she could not type minutes that I did not have to review after every meeting to make sure that they said what they were supposed to say. And she also had a nasty habit of sitting in her office with the lights off and her feet on her desk. So, but I gave her two years to fix those things. And I did that for political reasons as much as my personal well-being. So, yeah, I've learned both.
Thanks. All right. Good explanation. Any other? Next question.
You've kind of already addressed this. How do you provide feedback to department heads?
Face-to-face meetings. And I'm a big fan of a weekly senior-level staff meeting. I think that getting together every week allows every department to know what's going on in the other departments. We're all interdependent. We're all intertwined. We all do things that impact each other. And I think that weekly senior staff meetings allow that interdependence to be fostered and to grow and be developed. I'm never one to send an email or a letter or memo to some department director and say, I don't like what you're doing. That department director, if I have a problem, is going to see me or hear me directly. And I also try real hard to get out of the office and into the various departments and be there in their place of business, not in mine. Not that I don't like having the high-ground advantage, but I do think that, you know, they work hard and their departments are important to them. And it's important that I'm out there where they work, not so much being in my office, if I can help it.
Commissioner Lomko?
Are elected officials part of your department heads?
No. Elected officials are my boss.
I mean, the clerk and-
Oh, yeah. Well, in, the only place that I had elected officials is Lancaster County. And in Lancaster County, yes, they were part of our staff meetings. My county administrator only had staff meetings, though, once a month. I don't think that's enough, but that was his call as county administrator. But yes, they were part of those meetings.
Other questions? Next question.
How would you characterize your leadership style?
I can say for certainty, I am not a micromanager. But I can also say with certainty that I know what's going on in my departments. And I think that I have to because I'm responsible to y'all, to have the things running smoothly. And if I don't know what's going on in the departments, it's hard for me to do that and hard to take responsibility. And again, I use these kind of weekly staff meetings as my way of keeping up with what's going on. We have good, quality staff that knows their business. They know how to do their jobs. And I don't need to be sitting on them every day and telling them how to do what they do. But on the other hand, they've been given responsibilities and projects and whatever else has come up. And it's up to them to follow through on that. And it's up to me to make sure that they follow through on that. So I don't know that I have a word for my management style, but that is my management style.
All right. Any questions? Next question.
What do you believe the county administrator can do to motivate employees or improve morale?
I think one thing is it starts with me doing and saying and believing what I want them to do and believe and say. You know, an early example of this is that we used to, in Surfside, get mulch for our playgrounds by the semi-load. And I would get out there with my laborers, my day laborers, and shovel some mulch. Not because I'm good at it, but because if it's good enough for them, it's good enough for me. And I've taken that position throughout my career that if I'm asking people to do something, then I ought to be able to do it too. And I ought to show them that, you know, that's kind of leadership. I also think, though, that, you know, I've been in government over 25 years. I also think, though, that, you know, I've been in government over 25 years. And that time I've been in government is because I believe in public service. I believe that what I'm doing makes a difference, that it helps the residents, helps utilize their money in an efficient and effective manner. And I like what I'm doing. That's why I keep doing it. But I want my employees to feel that way. I mean, they're working for government, not just because it's an easy paycheck. They should be working for government because they're doing stuff for the public. It's public service. You know, if you're a secretary and you don't like working for government, you could go to work for another company and be a secretary and do the same kind of duties. But there's a difference. It's public money paying for your salary. It's public services that we provide. And I want my staff to feel like I feel about that, that it's important, that it's a good thing. And so I think that if the staff feels that way, if the staff gets that message, that helps to motivate. It's not a monetary motivation. It's a feel-good, "I'm doing the right thing" motivation. And then, of course, there's other kind of more specific things, less esoteric things. Employee awards, banquets, and things like that are always good motivators. They don't cost a lot of money, but they make people feel good, and they allow you to recognize your star performers during the course of the year. Things like that. Monthly or quarterly employee recognition. I think that a good program to solicit employee ideas for how to improve, make things more effective, more efficient, is a good thing that can motivate employees to be gung-ho about what they do. So there's lots of little things in addition to those kind of big-picture things.
Questions? Next comment, last question.
How would you view your role as a public figure in this community, and what obligations do you feel that brings?
The first obligation it brings is that I need to be available. I've never minded being at a restaurant and having residents come up and talk to me. I think that's part of my job. My job doesn't end just because it's 5:00. And so, in order to facilitate that, I'm very big on patronizing local establishments. I'm very big on attending local events. I'd like to be involved in at least one service organization. And then, you know, the whole idea of even when I'm at work is that I don't want my door closed. I don't want people to feel like they can't reach me and, for lack of a better word, touch me. You know, you need to get my attention, then you've got it. Come see me. So I think that my role in the community is to be the same leader that I am for staff, and hopefully the same leader that I am for the board.
Questions? Commissioner Hensel.
Jeff, could you tell us about perhaps some past community involvement you've had, either in service organizations, clubs and whatnot, and how that affected your job?
I think, I'm trying to think of, they don't really affect your job. I mean, if you go to a morning meeting, you may show up for work. I'm an early bird when it comes to work. You know, if I'm supposed to be at work at 8, if you find me there after 7:30, it's an odd situation, just the way I am. So on a day when I've got a meeting to attend, I may, you know, I may wind up, you know, not coming until 8:30, which is, will look strange, but I mean, it is what it is, because I think that's all part of the position. I try, I don't like to, I don't want to be seen as favoring an organization over another organization. So while I may join an organization, and I'll give you an example, there was, in Surfside, there was Rotary, there was Kiwanis, and there was, missing the other one. It's not a national one. It was a local organization. And each one of those three had their events during the course of the year. I wanted to attend as many of their events as I could, all three. Whether I belonged to all three or not, and attended all three's morning meetings, I wanted to at least be able to attend their events and make my presence felt for each of the organizations, not so much necessarily having to be a member and be at every meeting.
Commissioner Lomko.
Yeah, just a follow-up. What excites you when you're not at work, and what's your passion?
My four-and-a-half-year-old keeps me young. I have a passion for art. I don't do it as much as I used to. When I say a passion for art, I painted, I drew, photography, I took pictures. So that excites me. And, you know, I spend so much time on the job that having a couple days on the weekend to just hang out with my wife and my son is plenty exciting, especially for him. He thinks it's nice. So I think that's...
I guess I have one comment and one question. I was especially impressed with what you gave the board in terms of what you could expect of me and how you articulated how you view your work environment and your leadership skills.
Thank you.
And I looked at that and said, "This is something I want to keep as a model for me." I'm not looking for a job, but, you know, in terms of, you know, work ethics and all kinds of things, I thought it was really laid out nicely. I guess my main question for you...
You weren't looking for a job before you retired.
Little joke there. I spent more time at the county commission than I did at the bank before I retired. On your resume?
Yes.
You know, it looks like you're doing some career building, jumping from two-, three-year spots back and forth and stuff like that. And finally landed in county government. You've been there for, well, '010, '11, and you're not currently working there. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so, I guess we just want to know what your horizon looks like in terms of, you know, is county government for you? And how long, if you were offered the job, how long would you anticipate staying?
Okay. I think you're correct, that my last two positions were attempts at career building. But what I learned from my last two positions is that it would be much better for me to focus on the best place for me to be, and the best place for my family to be, and the best situation for me, and not necessarily whether the position is a career builder, per se. I crave stability. I had stability in my first two positions. I expected stability in Juno Beach. I really thought I was going to retire there. And politics happens. Lancaster County, I took a position based on the fact that it was a county and that it was a deputy county administrator position, and had no consideration whatsoever for where it was and the type of community it was, and whether I would be a good fit for that community. I'm not making that mistake again. The places that I'm applying for this time around are places that I see myself being able to stay for the rest of my career. The places that I'm applying for are places that I see being able to raise my son and have my family stay there for a long period of time. I have no desire to move again. I'd be perfectly happy settling in one place and staying there. Some of that's out of my control, but hopefully, I'm doing a better job this time around of picking the places where that could be more easily obtained. And so, in answer to your question, if you all select me, I'd be happy to be here for, let's see, I can collect social security when I'm 67, so that'd be 15 years. So if you'd like to have me for 15 years, I'll be here.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Richardson.
You've lived and spent most of your career in the South?
Yes.
Have you ever lived in a northern climate?
Yeah, wow. Depends on what you consider a northern climate. I grew up in Alexandria, Virginia, until I was eight. Went to school for four years up in George Washington, which, of course, is during the wintertime as well. Obviously, DC does not get the snow that you all get. I am fully aware of that. My wife went to Central Michigan, and so I've, she has prepared me for what I might be finding here. As I, I think I said to Ms. Maxbauer that I need to get a warmer suit, but...
We rode up on the elevator together.
I mean, we do typically get like 100 to 120 inches. We only got 70 this year, and it was very light winters.
Yeah, I'll tell you, my son would be very happy. He thinks making snowmen is the greatest thing that's ever happened. And we had zero snow in South Carolina this year, so he's just very depressed. So I think he'd love a place where he can get 100 inches. My wife and I, eh, you know, we'll live with it.
All right. We'll see how seven months of practice...
Yeah, he may be whining about it too after a while, but...
Okay. Going on to the next question. Communications and teamwork?
As a county administrator, you would be called upon to provide verbal and written reports to the Board of Commissioners. Tell us about your experience dealing with boards and commissions, and what kind of information you provide regularly?
All information as regularly as I can. Let's start with that. I think, let me talk about agenda items, and then let me talk about general communication. Agenda items, for me, need to be very, very detailed. The more information that you have up front, the easier it is for you all to make your decision when you sit down here. And so with that in mind, I want my reports to have background information. I want my reports to have a discussion of what the issues are. I want my reports to have alternatives that are available, as many as we can come up with. And I want my reports to have recommendations. The reason I want recommendations is because you hire me to provide those recommendations. You're not hiring me to sit on my hands. Doesn't mean that I expect you to always follow those recommendations, but I do want you to have them. And so when you see staff reports coming out from my staff, you're going to see reports that look very much like that almost every time. Even something simple like a renewal of an annual contract that you renewed for 20 years. I still want the background. I still want the discussion. I still want the alternatives. I still want the recommendation, because I think it's important for you all to have that. So let's move to general communication. I'm a big email fan. And the reason I'm a big email fan is that I believe that you all should get the same message, exactly the same as I'm giving to everybody else. If I call somebody up and I don't remember to say what I said to one that I say to another, you're not getting the same message. And that can cause problems. It can cause distrust. It can cause confusion. It can cause problems. And I don't want that. So I try and make sure that everything is put down so that when I send it out, it's the same message to everybody across the board. That being said, there are situations where a phone call must be made. And the example I like to use is that in Juno Beach, we had some Haitian refugees washed up on shore. I did not want to take a chance on my counsel finding out about this by watching the local TV news. So they got a phone call, because I couldn't take a chance on them not picking up their email in time or whatever, any kind of those issues. So a phone call was in order. So there are situations where communication has to be done directly and by phone. But if it's something where I think that it's informational and you all need to get the same information in the same way, I will try and put it in writing as much as possible.
Okay. Comments? Commissioner Richardson.
Many of the agenda items we get here, I mean, first of all, there is an agenda review process, which is handled, of course, at least has been handled by the administrator and the staff. But many of the agenda items are put on there by either senior department heads who report to you, or senior department heads who don't report to you, like, you know, elected officials and judges and whatever. So would you see yourself doing the same type of detailed analysis on those items that are being proposed by, you know, other senior staff individuals?
Yes. Senior staff, hopefully, you know, one of the first things that I do is talk to them about the way I like to see my reports come out, so that their reports start coming out in that fashion. Elected officials can do what they want to do. It's highly likely that you will get some kind of backup staff report from my office that says, "Here's what we think of what the elected official is asking, and here's our opinion of what you've got." Because we can't tell an elected official how to write their reports. They'll write them the way they want to.
But you would, I mean, if you felt strongly about something, you would possibly provide an analysis that was, you know, contrary to the recommendation being given?
Yes.
Anything else? Next question.
This position will be called upon to provide information to all forms of media, including print, television, and radio. Tell us about your experience within public relations and how you respond to criticism.
I've dealt with the media before, obviously. And I've always had what I consider a good working relationship with, especially the print media. But I think that that good working relationship comes from having a healthy dose of mistrust. I've seen plenty of newspaper stories that don't say what I told them.
Every candidate says the same thing.
Well, if you've been in this business long enough, it is what it is. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's not, it's, you're asking usually not the, you know, you're not getting your top-of-the-line CNN reporter usually. And so you're asking them to try and remember what you're telling them, and then put that into writing in a way that reflects what you told them. Doesn't always work. So not only do I want to talk with the press and share what I need to share with them, but sometimes I need to go back and correct what they put in the paper after I've shared with them. So I think that, you know, the good working relationship comes from having a healthy distrust of what they do and what they're going to put in the paper about what I say. I think, can I get you to ask the second part of that?
How you respond to criticism?
Yes, criticism. I've been criticized. I don't take it personally. What I do is business. It's the business of the residents. It's the business of the council. It's the business of the county or the city. It's not me having a personal axe to grind. And in fact, being an ICMA credential manager, I mean, we, our code of ethics really demands that we not be personally involved in these decisions. If I make a recommendation, it's not because I have a favorite in the mix. It's because I think it's the best thing for the county overall. And so if I get criticism for those decisions, everybody's entitled to their opinion. And really, you know, when it comes down to it, a majority of this board is going to decide whether they like my recommendation or don't like my recommendation. And if you don't, you're going to do something different. And if you do, you're going to do my recommendation, and that's fine, too. So criticism is what criticism is. You just live with it.
Okay. Questions? Next question?
How do you perceive county commissioner involvement in the day-to-day operation of the county, including interaction with employees?
I prefer that anything serious come through me. I'm a, again, I'm a real believer in the council-manager form of government, which means the council sets policy and the manager administers that policy. That being said, there's nothing wrong with you all talking to staff and asking them some questions. Hopefully, if the question relates to something that could be a problem down the road, that staff member is going to let somebody know. Because I'd rather, just like I don't want you all to find out about something from the press and get caught with your pants down, I'd rather not get caught with my pants down from something that's going on between you as a council member and the staff member somewhere. But beyond that, I mean, as long as you're not directing them to do anything, I don't see any problem with that interaction. But beyond that, I mean, as long as you're not directing them to do anything, I don't see any problem with that interaction.
Okay. Questions? All right, do we understand that? Next question?
What do you believe is the purpose of county government?
To provide services to the public. And to... It depends. I mean, this county government provides some different services than Lancaster County government, which provided different services in some of the counties that I was familiar with in Florida. But I think that in general, it's to provide services to the public.
Did you hit the last two questions on communication?
We didn't ask those of the candidates yesterday.
Okay, all right, all right. Any comments? Moving on?
If you were offered and accepted this position, what would your first 30 days look like as administrator?
Listening, 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 more listening. Until I get to meet everybody, until I get to hear what everybody does, what everybody is feeling, what everybody's thinking, it's hard to take any actions. You don't want to do things without knowing what's going on, what all your players are thinking. My first 30 days will be a lot of meetings, I would imagine. Meetings with senior staff, meetings with departments. I can't imagine that anything's going to happen in the first 30 days except me listening a lot.
Okay, question? Would you hold personal meetings with commissioners or just as a group?
You all are included in that group, yes. I need to listen to you as well. You're my boss. So yes, individual meetings would be important for all of you. It's not that any one board member can kind of direct the show or lead the show, but if I know... If I know how the wind is blowing for each member, then it's easier for me to build consensus when I'm doing my reports and try and aim things in a way that's going to build consensus, not fracture the board. So I need to know individually how everybody feels and what they're thinking.
Mr. Wheelock?
Well, a question I ask everyone that I kind of forgot where I asked it yesterday was... Our conditions in Grand Taurus County are going to change significantly January 1st of 2013. We will, the county board will go from nine members to seven. We will have a new county clerk, a new county prosecutor, and a new county treasurer. Have you ever been through those kinds of changes? They're going to, it's obviously going to change the dynamics of our community.
It will and it won't. I think that you're... The number of people on a board simply changes the amount of people you need for a majority. It doesn't really change where you're getting your direction from as board members. Public is still telling you what they want. The district size may be increasing in order to accommodate that shrinkage of number of members. But you're still getting your direction from the public and still following through and doing what the public is asking you to do. I have not been in a place where that has happened, not in that way. In Surfside and Hallandale Beach, however, I did change their election process where they used to run en masse to, you know, all five of them would run at the same time and, or, well, three of the five would run at the same time and then top three vote-getters would get in, didn't matter what.
That's the same as the...
Right, but I changed both of those to seats. They didn't have districts, because districts didn't make sense in small communities. But what we did do is make it seats so that you had to run for a particular seat. And that way, if there was a commissioner that was well-liked and everybody was happy with their performance, that commissioner probably wouldn't draw any opposition. On the other hand, if it was a commissioner that was a lightning rod for some reason, they might draw some competition. And so your elections became more specific for a seat and you also had less possibility of people getting in simply because of name recognition. You had to actually pick what you wanted to run for and where you wanted to run. So I've been involved in that kind of situation. It's a little, not a little, it's a lot different, but, so I have seen changes like that occur.
We are all elected by district and we are all elected at the same time, every two years.
But you have to live in your district in order to run, which restricts... It's not like you have nine of you running and, you know, top nine vote-getters get in, which is kind of the way we were doing things down there.
Typical city, our Trevor City elections, but they're staggered.
Right.
Yeah. How would you describe your relationship with board members throughout your career?
Mainly very good. I've had a couple of board members that weren't my biggest fans. But I also have had some board members that were my big fans. One of my references, I think, is a Juno Beach councilman who was the mayor when I was there. I don't know if I provided you all references yet or not, but he will tell you that we didn't always agree eye to eye on the issues, but he always knew that if I talked to him, I was telling him what I believed and was giving him my honest opinion and that in the end, whatever the council wanted to do, council wanted to do. And again, it was business, it wasn't personal. There was no, you know, animosity there. I think that the two or three council members that I've had issues with has been because it's become personal for them as opposed to that business that I like to maintain. And I'll give you an example, in Hallandale Beach, my boss sent me out to figure out a better way to do our tennis operations and I came back and told them we need to go out for an RFP because we haven't done it in, I forget at the time, like 10, 15 years, whatever. And I thought we could do better. And so we prepared an agenda item and went before the commission and I got blasted for even considering removing the tennis pro. The commissioner that did the blasting, as it turns out, was very good friends with the tennis pro, played tennis every day. And I really didn't consider any of that and I was much younger and much more naive back then, I think. But I didn't consider any of those things when I was making my decision. I was looking at what was best for the organization. And he, once that happened, he was not my ally at that point anymore. He did not like me for touching something I shouldn't have touched. So I would say that those council members that have had issues with me, it's been because of personal things as opposed to... As opposed to the job I've done.
Follow-up question? For those commissioners that you didn't have, that you didn't see eye to eye, for example, on one issue or another or whatever, were there any other steps that you took to try to solidify the relationship? And did it work or did not work?
I tried numerous personal meetings. And I tried, the one in Houndale Beach, I even tried using another council member who was friendly with me to kind of speak to him and see if we could get him to tone the rhetoric down. All of it has been to no avail, because once things become personal, there's almost no way to turn it around. If somebody takes a dislike to you for a personal reason, it doesn't matter how good you are at the job, it doesn't matter really what information you're providing to them. Everything is clouded with that personal enema. I said the wrong word.
Enemas.
Enemas, thank you. It's early. So no, I don't think that I was very successful at making those changes, but I don't think it had to do with a lack of effort, it just had to do with, once it became personal, it was just, it was what it was.
Yep, and those things happen. Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Henshaw?
Since we're close to the subject anyway, I'll ask. Could you describe briefly the circumstances surrounding leaving your last position?
I will do my best, considering that I have never gotten an official position as to why I'm not in Lancaster County. Lancaster County is a very insulated, very rural, very homogeneous county. Most of their residents have lived there their whole lives, their families live there. You talk to people, they're related to everybody else, they went to school with everybody else. They're a very closed, tight-knit community. I was brought in to effect some change for them. And part of that change is because the northern part of the county is changing. The outflow from Charlotte, North Carolina, is seeping into the northern part of Lancaster County. And those residents are not from Lancaster County, they're not even from South Carolina. They're from all over the place. They want services like they're used to up north. They want, they want to see things the way they're used to seeing things. So they brought me in to try and bridge that gap. And that involved making a number of changes, forgetting the EMS department, which was something that I didn't know about when I got hired. Changes related to strategic planning, changes related to the uniform development ordinance, and operational changes within the departments. I came in and as you can see from the resume, considering I was only there a little over a year, I did a lot of stuff. But what happened is that the council... I think what happened is that the council saw the changes that were coming and decided they didn't really want the changes they thought they wanted. And when you bring in a change agent and you no longer want changes, no real reason to have the change agent anymore. They have not filled that position. I don't know that they ever will fill that position. The administrator did not want a deputy. I was brought in against his wishes. And if you don't want change, no real reason to have the person bringing the change. So I think that's why I'm out, I couldn't tell you that for sure, but I would, it's as good a guess as I've got.
Okay. Any questions? Next question?
Tell us one or two achievements which you contributed to your employer's success in the past few years.
I think the strategic plan in Lancaster County will contribute to their long-term success. They came up with some very good goals and some very good ideas of where they want to go in the next few years. And they had never done strategic planning at all. This was a totally new process for them, straight from scratch. So I think we did a good job there. I think, I think in Juno Beach, I brought in some really quality senior staff for them. The public works director retired while I was there, the police chief retired while I was there. And of course, I had to let the clerk go, so I had to bring in some significant new staff. And I think that that staff was quality staff that's helped them even to this day. I think that the other thing that I was able to do in Juno Beach is get projects completed for them. When I came in, they were years behind on a number of projects, to the point that some grants that they had received from the state, from the county, and from the federal government were about to lapse because they hadn't completed the projects. I was able to get those projects completed, make sure that they got all their grant money, and ended up making significant improvements to A1A, which is the main road through town. I got pedestrian lighting along the ocean, which is very difficult because of the sea turtles. I had a months-long battle with the state of Florida over what I could do and what I couldn't do. And ended up getting it done. So I think I've had significant achievements. You know, I'm not even including things like, you know, reducing the mileage and still increasing services and things like that. I think I've been very successful at project management over the years and very successful at my hiring ability and very successful at my ability to plan for the future.
Okay. Commissioner Henshaw?
Tell us about the town-wide Wi-Fi.
It's one of my favorite projects, but in Juno Beach, it was easy because 42% of the town is environmentally sensitive land, which means there's nothing going on there except animals and they don't need Wi-Fi. So the reality is I only had to cover 58% of the town with Wi-Fi coverage, which made it a lot easier on a small town. But that being said, we put up, we brought in a company, we put up repeaters on some of the taller condominiums on the ocean and internally along the intercoastal. And offered a Wi-Fi service that was twofold. There was one part that was reserved for government use, where our police officers could access the Wi-Fi in their mobile units, where we could use it in the buildings and whatever we needed for that. And then there was a second component which became an option for residents. If they didn't like Bell South's product or if they didn't like Comcast's product, they could turn around and go to this product and buy either on a daily, weekly, monthly, or annual basis service for Wi-Fi. And the way we set it up, we had really good penetration. There were some lower units in some of the condominiums that if you were in the interior of your unit, you might have a little trouble getting access. But for the most part, we had really good penetration and it was a good system.
Was there any conflict with government competing with local business or...?
There was no conflict with government and local business, because I don't think local business thought we could do it and I don't think they thought we were a competition. The only real issue we had was putting up some of the arrays that we needed to put up. We had one condominium, it was a complex, there were four buildings in the complex. And they were all relatively low-rise, I mean, five stories is, I think, their height, five or four. And we had an ideal building where we wanted it on for maximum coverage. And we went to that building and their buildings board said, nope, we don't like the way it looks. You're going to see it, it looks ugly, we don't want it here. And so we then said, well, what about if we put it on one of the next buildings? You won't get quite as good coverage, but you'll get some coverage. And we went to those buildings and they said, well, if they don't like it on their building, why would we want it on our building? So we ended up having to write off the whole complex and when we did, we sent them a letter and said, look, you will not have Wi-Fi coverage. You will not be able to participate in this program because we cannot cover you if you don't allow us to put an array up here. And they said, that's fine, we accept that, and we said, great. And so we have one, one community that's just not covered because they just didn't think it looked good on the top of their building.
Interesting. Any other comments?
As a follow-up to that, did you approach the Wi-Fi solution as a means to assist law enforcement primarily? Or was it, let's get everybody this cool toy?
It was a means of providing Wi-Fi for public use mainly. And I wanted, what I really wanted when I first started looking at it was public use for the public safety. We had a public works building that had terrible connectivity and we could not hardwire it. So I wanted them to be able to access something that would give them connectivity. And I wanted the public to be able to, we had a lake in the middle of the town and I wanted them to be able to walk around the lake and use the internet if they wanted to when they were sitting on a bench. So that's where it started. When the company came in, they're like, well, we can do this for you, but we can really save you costs. In fact, we'll make you money if you allow us to do a public...
Did it make you money?
It was, well, I left after it had gotten started, but at the time, it was supposed to be making over $100,000 a year by the time it got fully up and running. Now, whether it actually did that or not, given the economy and everything else that was going on, some of that was related to when the Canadians and everybody came in for the season, would they access that Wi-Fi rather than trying to sign up for Comcast and turn off Comcast and sign up for Comcast and turn off Comcast? So some of that, some of those numbers were projections based on, you know, what was going to happen in season. And of course, I left in August, so right before season. So I couldn't tell you for sure, but that was the, the projections were about $100,000 a year, so...
And we lost our moderator for a second.
I've got the next question.
Okay.
Jeff, what has been the biggest challenge in your career and how did you manage it?
I think the biggest challenge in my career was when I came up to South Carolina. I'd never been out of the state of Florida. I'd never been out of the state of Florida, I'd never worked for a county. I was in a completely new location, a completely different place, a completely different environment. I had to pick up my family, move everybody up with me. And I, the way I handled it was to do, was to get my mind wrapped around what I always tell other people, which is, if you can manage a local government, you can manage a local government. And so I went into Lancaster County with the same mindset, that it's just government, I've done it my whole life, I know what I'm doing, it's not a big deal, get yourself doing what you know how to do. And so I did. I went, talked to people, learned about what I needed to learn about, utilized my resources, there's staff people that know things about how things are done that you, that I didn't know because I hadn't been in Lancaster County before. And I used those people to my advantage, to learn what I needed to learn as quickly as I could learn. And again, and I accomplished a lot in a little over a year, and I couldn't have done that if I didn't, if I wasn't able to pick up what I needed to pick up in a hurry. And I was able to pick up what I needed to in a hurry because I utilized my resources to maximum advantage.
Okay. Questions? Next question.
And lastly, why do you want to work for Grand Travers County?
I think, number one, stability is very important to me. I, I've been, I've been there and done that with instability, and I do not want that again if I can help it. And as I said earlier, I've been very selective about where I'm applying. And I think Grand Travers offers me the, the, the strong possibility of some stability in my career and in my life. I think that Grand Travers is a great place for my family to be, schools are good, nature is present. You know, those are all things that, that I can't, I can't begin to tell you how little culture and how little nature there is in Florida, considering that it's Florida. And South Carolina has lots of nature, but there's not culture there. And it's, it's odd to find, it's not odd, it's hard to find an environment where you have all of those kind of things all put together into one package. And I think Grand Travers offers that to me, and, and I think that's a good thing for me and my family.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Wheelock.
Joe, tell me what you can do to help Grand Travers County remain a leader in our community, our state, and our nation.
I can provide you as coun, as the board, I'm going to have to get adjusted to council and board, just pardon me for jumping sometimes. I can provide you with the leadership so that your policies and the, the things that the residents want from you to bring forward can get done. There is, it's going to sound like I have a swelled head, but there is no project that I cannot move forward for you if you tell me that that's what you all want to do. If there's, if there's a, if there is something that needs to be done for the community, and you give me that charge, it will get done. It will get done in a timely fashion, it will get done in the most cost-effective manner I can come up with, and it will get done with results.
Okay. As a follow-up question, do you have any experience with state or national associations that are affiliated with your employment?
I've been, I'm involved in a whole bunch of ICMA state organizations, Florida, South Carolina, Virginia, Pennsylvania, the International City Management Association, also a member of IPMA-HR, which is the International Public Management Association for Human Resources, and the American Academy for, of Project Management. I'm certified as a Master Project Manager now as well. So all of those organizations, I've had varying levels of, of involvement with. Florida was involved in some committees on their, you know, at a state level. And ICMA, I'm a credential manager as well.
I understand it's a significant time commitment and achievement to get that ICMA designation, is that correct?
Yes. Every year, I, they say 40 hours. It's, the reality is that you have to gain knowledge on an annual basis. And they're not going to penalize me if I had 36 hours instead of 40, but I have to be able to show that I've gained knowledge, and that I've used that knowledge on the job, that I've applied what I've learned to my position so that I'm bettering the government that I work for.
Okay. Do you have any questions of us?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I usually like to get a feel for what the residents think about how the local government provides services. So I don't know if you all want to take this or not, but what do they tell you about how county staff provide services?
Well, that's going to be a, it's going to be a difficult question to answer. Generally, we hear from the public when there's something that's a hot button in the community that's been reported by the press, whether it be separation of responsibilities for the Drain Commissioner, or budgetary issues that involves the reductions of officers or whatever. So it's usually driven by an issue that has been highlighted by the press that we would get feedback on. We each have districts, and we attend our township meetings, and we give reports, and then we give feedback. So we have an excellent relationship back and forth, and there's usually, you know, that's the normal means, we get calls at home and emails and those kinds of things regarding interactions with county government operations or staff or whatever we can assist with. So, you know, that's basically our interaction. You know, either there's a hot topic we fill the boardroom with because of the issue, or it's a phone call on a particular item that they need help on, or assistance with a particular department. So it varies, but we're not, you know, Michigan's a home rule, so, you know, we're not involved that much in decisions regarding land use, development, and zoning planning, those kinds of things. So there's more, obviously more activity with the public at the township meetings and the city meetings than there are at the county meetings. But I guess that would kind of answer the question.
Would you say that the residents are generally happy with the level of service they get?
Well, we've tried, we've tried to engage them on surveys, both publicly, when we do our strategic plan, invite them into a large room, and ask them what they feel important, what's important to them on a county government. And we've done some surveys online. But that's one of our challenges of, you know, having them understand what are, what we do, which a lot of them don't understand what county commissioners do. And getting public feedback to help us make policy decisions and budget decisions, those are our biggest challenges and will, always will be. And like I said, it's generally, you know, attendance and letters and emails are generally related to a particular item that might be addressed at the paper level.
One thing we can tell you, if they're not happy...
We'll hear about it.
But I think as an overall, you know, the community is pretty, pretty content with the way services are provided.
Okay. I'll give you one more. Is there one thing you would want your administrator to do when he first starts before anything else?
Well, I think you answered the question about, you know, your first 30 days is an orientation session, coming in and getting familiar with the department, has their strategic plan, our budget process, our financial condition, some of the challenges we have moving forward with our budget. And getting to know the community leaders, that'll be your first 30-day challenge. Beyond that, our strategic plan goes to '12, and we've held off doing a three-year adjustment every, we've been doing three years at a time for our strategic plan, and we've held off that strategic planning process until we have the new county administrator in place. That, and the budget process starts in June, and our thought was is that if we can get our county administrator selection done and in place during the month, you know, at least in June, getting someone on board, we can start the strategic planning process and get them involved in the budget process at the same time. So the time would be perfect, perfect for us, for the new person coming in. And, and of course, there are the day-to-day activities that they would have to work with and stuff like that. But as Commissioner Wheelock indicated, we do have some, some management changes coming forward with elected officials, and our finance officer is running for county treasurer, and then we'll have to have a discussion about that particular area. We have some things in mind, but that's a decision of the next board, not our board. And we do have elections coming up in August and November. We here, we hold two-year seats, and the commission is going from nine to seven, so we have to go through, the commission has to actually go through that process personally. But, so any event, we'd like the ball roll, start rolling around, you know, the, you know, the June time, and not only looking at the strategic planning process, the budget process, but, and we've looked at one-year, two-year budgets. I don't know if you have an opinion on a two-year budget or an extended budget process, that would be one question I might want to ask you before you leave, but that's kind of, in a nutshell, what we're looking at.
Okay. If you, if you want an answer, I, I don't have a preference, one-year or two-year. I think the, at the height of the recession, with the economy turning so quickly on its ear and then turning again on its ear...
Right.
I think it was very difficult to do a multi-year budget. No matter how good you are at prognosticating, you couldn't possibly come up with what was going to actually happen by the second year, which meant you were pretty much budgeting a year at a time anyway, because you were having to adjust your second-year budget to catch what, what you missed on the fly. As things slowed down and become more stable, two-year budgets are probably easier to do. I don't have a particular preference, one way or another.
All right. Any other questions for?
Okay. We would like to thank you for coming in and sharing your time and experience with us. And of course, we've had, I just want to let you know, we've had four interviews yesterday, we have one more today, and then we have on our agenda, at the end of the, our process today, to talk about the pleasure of the board in terms of what next steps we would like to take in terms of trying to identify or what process we want to go through to try to identify the top candidates, or is, you know, how we go about the selection process.
Well, I thank you all for having me here, it's been an honor. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Steph.
All right. Take a couple-minute break.
Safe flight, bro. Safe flight, bro.[192.37]
I did that was to help the people who were left, who were trying to find positions, reaching out to the contacts I have across the US, as well as helping them with resume preparation, mock interviews, and so on, to help them find new positions.
Okay. Uh, next question.
Grand Traverse County has thirteen separate bargaining units, all with different contracts, ten of which expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. Please tell us about your experience negotiating labor contracts, including negotiating multiple labor contracts at one time.
Okay, we have, with Coca-Cola, I oversee four separate operating branches. We have three different union contracts within those branches. So, uh, they all expire at different times, so we have negotiations at different times. But, we have to meet, we have to iron out the details, see what they want, what we want to give them, and come to a consensus. And thankfully, we've never had a strike. We've always been really good about being able to work things out. The bottom line is, it's all about developing relationships with people, and treating people with dignity and respect, and understanding what they're asking for, and coming to a common ground where they understand if the business does well, they do well. So, that's, uh, you know, I've done that several times now, actually, probably six times now over the seven years I've been with Coke, because the contracts expire every couple of years, and like I said, they're, they're on different schedules. So, what it involves is meeting with the union steward, our union individual, and then someone from the union itself. And, you know, just sitting down and working out the details of the entire contract, once we go from the back.
Questions? Next question.
Um, transitioning to some questions about budget. Currently, Grand Traverse County has an annual operating budget of a hundred and thirty-eight million, and budgets for one fiscal year at a time. Tell us about your experience in managing budgets, including managing budgets covering multiple fiscal years.
Okay. Well, in the military, right now, I'm a human resource advisor. That's a special duty assignment. I've been doing that for a couple of years now. Uh, but before that, and actually still now, I'm a financial management crew by trade. So, every year, we have to deal with the budget there. And, uh, you know, at Selfridge, we have about twenty-five million or so, and then at Bala Creek, about twenty million. And, you know, that's, uh, the entire process, that, that's the most similar budget I've dealt with, as far as, you know, to a county budget, uh, because the bottom line is, you want to end up at zero. There's no profit there. So, um, year-end close, we have to sit there and wait. What happens is inevitably, is we, we cut back as the year goes on, and then at the end of the year, we get the fallout money, so we have to make sure it's all spent, so we get it the next year. And that involves, you know, we stay there till midnight, you know, on September thirtieth, that's when our fiscal year ends with the government. And, can you repeat the question, please, Jen?
Sure. Um, Grand Traverse County has an operating budget of a hundred and thirty-eight million, budgets one fiscal year at a time. Tell us about your past experience managing budgets, including, um, budgets covering multiple fiscal years.
Okay, so my, and that's the story with the military. With Coca-Cola, I deal with the annual budget, which is on a calendar year. And like I said, our gross profit is about a hundred million dollars annually. And what I have to do, though, is I usually prep in the summertime, usually July or August, and I'd sit there, I, we've got just these monster spreadsheets that are our budgets, and I have to drill down into every line and see where we're at. And typically, what we'll get is we'll get targets, for example, telephones, uh, we may get, you know, you have to spend ten percent less this year. So, I have to figure out, okay, how are we going to do it? And that's when I tend to bid out projects and services, so I can see where we're going to save, how we're going to save, how we're going to get to the end goal. And that's for every single line in our operating report, which is hundreds of lines. I mean, it takes months to create the budget for Coke every year.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Wheelock.
Uh, recently, the Michigan tax tribunal decided that, uh, properties in Grand Traverse County had been over-assessed, and, uh, decided that we should pay back seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, can you talk to me about any experience you'd have about making those kind of cuts on a budget?
Well, like I said in the first interview, I always have to look at how we're spending our money, different projects and services, and what I always tell people is that small things add up. So, the example I used then was our waste management. We were spending, uh, about fifteen hundred to two thousand a month on it, because we were getting picked up twice a week. And, we didn't need to be, though, because our dumpster just wasn't full. So, what I did is switched it to an on-call delivery, so that they would pick it up whenever we called them. And that ended up saving us about, mm, a thousand to fifteen hundred a month. So, that's just one example of a small dollar amount, but, like I said, the small things add up. So, when you look at how you're doing everything, um, you know, that's where you can come to us. An amount like seven hundred and fifty thousand, obviously, a lot, you know, but that's where you need to look at every single thing you're doing, how can you improve, and improve efficiencies, to get to where you need to be.
Thanks. Okay, questions? Next question.
As the administrator, what would you anticipate your involvement to be throughout the year in managing and evaluating our budget to actual performance?
That's what I do all the time with Coke. Every, every week, every month, uh, you know, I see where we're at, I see where we need to be trued up with accruals, I see if, uh, something's charged to the wrong area, where we need to reclassify those dollars, so that next year, when we're looking at prior year spend, we know where we spent the money, uh, to ensure accuracy. Uh, so I'd say I'd be heavily involved in that, because that's what I do now, and, you know, that's just second nature to me, uh, to make sure we're in line with where we need to be.
Okay, questions? Next question.
How would you evaluate economic and other trends in the market relative to their impact on our overall financial position?
Well, I know, uh, in reading the ticker, uh, from Tuesday, that, uh, the budget's the number-one concern here, and I understand why, because we talked about, in the first interview, the declining tax revenues.
Ticker.
Can you repeat that question one more time, Jen?
Yep. How would you evaluate economic and other trends in the market relative to their impact on our overall financial position?
Well, I would say our economic trends are, are huge to our overall financial position. And again, that goes back to what I was saying about, uh, looking at how we do every single thing, and how we can improve our efficiency and effectiveness. Uh, because of the declining tax revenues, we need to figure out, where can we save money? Because at Coke, we experienced the same kind of thing with declining, uh, revenue, you know, based on a down economy. I mean, people just aren't going to spend as much. So, the fastest way to increase profitability is to decrease expenses in a down economy. So, along the same lines, we would have to, since there's no true profitability within a government, you need to decide, okay, where can you save money? And that's what's going to get you in line with the declining tax revenues, and help you hit the budget.
Comments? Next question.
What do you believe is the purpose of fund balance, and when would you consider it appropriate to use fund balance?
I'm not exactly sure what you mean by fund balance. Uh, I'm assuming that you, you're talking about the same thing as far as a true-up goes. That's what I would guess.
Let me help you with that.
Yes.
Um, in, uh, the government structure, um, the, the local unit of government of the county has so much that has, what we call, in a fund balance, that helps us, and, that's not designated towards any operations, it's there for, like, emergency purposes, and bond ratings, and cushions for, uh, you know, up and downs of the economy, and those kinds of things.
Okay.
It's, it's an actual dollar amount that they would set aside for, you know, reserves.
Okay. Uh, I would say, when you're going to run into a major budget issue, is when that would be appropriate to use the fund balance. Uh, for example, in the military, when I deploy, uh, we have a certain amount of money to use to buy, uh, goods and services. Now, if you exceed that amount, you run into ADA issue, which is Anti-Deficiency Act, and the commander can technically go to jail for that. So, that would be one situation where you use something like a fund balance to, uh, to shore that up, to be sure you have the funds that you need where you need them.
Okay. Comments or questions? Okay, next question.
We are currently fifty percent funded with our defined benefit pension plan. Tell us about your experience with an unfunded pension liability and its impact on annual contribution requirements, and discuss the budget consequences as well.
I don't have any direct experience with pension shortfalls, but I did, actually, before I came in here, I talked to somebody about that, and I know that's one of the big issues facing the county in the next few years, uh, is truing that up. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, there's been a reprieve as far as payments into the pension fund, and that's set to expire in two to three years?
Yeah, they've, they've, they've had it on accelerated amortization.
Okay.
Commissioner, um, Wheelock can explain that, and I'll just defer to him at this moment.
What happened is, ten years ago, Grand Traverse County, uh, went from a defined benefit to a defined contribution retirement program. Uh, MERS, who is our retirement agent, uh, put us on what they call an accelerated amortization program, which, instead of having to fully fund our program with thirty years, every year, they reduced it by two years. So, we're now down to sixteen years. Uh, we petitioned MERS Board of Directors about a year and a half ago now, I think, and they, uh, they gave us a three-year reprieve, if you will, in that they did not continue to diminish that payback. We are still making the regular monthly or annual payments to our program as required under the MERS contract, but, you know, we still are not fully funded. Uh, because of the change in our, in our policy and our retirement program, uh, we have fewer employees on defined benefit, you know, every year, because of retirements and things, those, those people are, the number of people are smaller. So, therefore, the number of contributions into that program are also smaller. So, the payments that we need to make to MERS become larger each year to keep that program whole. And, you know, that's kind of where we're at with that, you know. It's not that we're not making the payments, it's not that we didn't do something correctly, it's just we've made a change in the program, and in exchange, they've accelerated the amortization program. We are still making the payments that they say that we should make, but if you truly look at our liability, we are not fully funded. We're only about fifty percent funded.
Okay. So, that's a non-contributory pension plan for the employees?
It's both.
Both, okay.
The, the employee contributes, and we contribute to match.
Okay. So, that's definitely something that's going to be a long-term issue that needs to be addressed
Long-term.
In the county. Okay. Could you repeat the question one more time, please, Jen?
Um, we are currently fifty percent funded with our defined benefit pension plan. Tell us about your experience with unfunded pension liability and its impact on annual contribution requirements, and discuss the budget consequences.
Okay. Obviously, that's going to be one of the biggest budget consequences that the county faces in the next few years as well. Um, like I said, I don't have any direct experience with that, but again, it goes back to, you know, sometimes it's going to require a hard decision, you know, maybe then, you know, it's a, it's a full contribution by the employees, you know, just for an example. But, uh, the bottom line is, you've got to make the budget, so, uh, you know, the difficult decisions may need to be made.
Okay. Follow-up questions? All right, next question.
Grand Traverse County has financial oversight over a few entities in the county with which we share a tax ID, such as the Grand Traverse Pavilions, the Road Commission, Department of Public Works, and the airport. Tell us about your experience with providing financial oversight to multiple entities.
Well, again, with Coca-Cola, I oversee four different operating facilities, and I have financial responsibility for all four of those operating locations. So, whether it's rent, utilities, maintenance and repair, any services, a building might have custodial, security, so on, I'm responsible for all of those. And again, I have to look at how we're spending our money, and how we're, uh, you know, where we're spending it, and how we can do better in each of those areas as well. Especially because we continue to have reduced budgets at Coca-Cola as well, because of the down economy and the decrease in revenue.
Okay. Questions? Next question.
Rising healthcare costs have a significant budget impact. Tell us how you have managed rising healthcare costs.
Well, we have that same issue at Coca-Cola. Healthcare costs have gone up tremendously since, uh, since I've been there, and the bottom line is, uh, it ends up the company pays a little more, and then the employees pay a little more. And again, I think the big thing with something like this is ensuring you communicate to the employees why it's happening. Uh, you know, don't just make that change without letting them know. And it's tough sometimes, but at the same time, uh, you know, it's the nature of the world, and, you know, if you read articles and follow the news, you know that healthcare costs everywhere are increasing.
Okay. Commissioner Lencoe.
Wellness programs, have you ever been involved with them? Do you implement them, and do you think they have a payback for the, uh, company that provides for wellness programs?
We, we do have wellness programs at Coca-Cola, uh, you know, different things, counseling, so on. Uh, I think that it absolutely provides a benefit to the employees, because while a lot of those things are intangible, it directly affects the way people work, their satisfaction at work, their morale, and those, uh, those intangible factors, you can't put a cost on them. So, if it's, if it's within the, the realm of, uh, possibilities, then definitely, absolutely, wellness programs are good, and they benefit employees, they actually make them happier, more productive employees, more efficient.
Okay, questions? Next question.
Tell us about your experience recommending and executing public policy. How do you find balance with property owner rights and the desire for central planning?
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Tell us about your experience recommending and executing public policy. How do you find balance with property owner rights and the desire for central planning?
Okay, I have to, again, I advise my commander on a variety of topics, and I have to, uh, often bring policy to the table for him, that we create our local policy at the base. So, my experience with that is, obviously, uh, it's a lot of collaboration, uh, talking through, um, different issues. I'll give you, uh, one example, uh, we had a change in our regulation. I provide leadership training every month to base population, so approximately fifty to a hundred people a month. And, the policy recently changed that said we had to limit the number of people we had in the class. Originally, I had two to three hundred in the class, so, I had to go to the commander and explain, here's the change, this is why it's changed, and then figure out the logistics and how we're going to make this work, because there's also a time limit on how often everyone has to have this training. So, I had to go to him with all this information, and then roll out the policies to the commanders, the chiefs, the first sergeants, and so on, and get buy-in from the entire base population. And what was the second part of that, property?
How do you find balance with property owner rights and the desire for central planning?
I don't have any experience with property owners, but, central planning, we have a lot of that with Coke. A lot of our, uh, a lot of our customer service is centralized, whether it's down in Florida or overseas. So, you know, again, a lot of that is open communication, and exchanging information with people, so they understand where they need to go to get specific information, and that includes internal and external customers.
Okay. Comments, questions? Commissioner Wheelock.
Obviously, I lost where Jen's at on my questions, because we're in...
You're on your, uh, page two. Um, tell us about your experience recommending...
You can talk about the dams, Sonny.
I, yeah. I knew what my question was, I just, uh, lost your question.
Oh, I can, if you want, but...
This question arises in our community because of the fact that we went through a very open and public process, uh, resulting in a decision to decommission and breach three dams on the Boardman River. Uh, as a result of that decision, uh, the Boardman Pond was drained, and we have issues with, uh, homeowners on what used to be Boardman Pond, knowing that they're having lakefront property. And, uh, although multitudes of illegal opinions have been given that says they did not have riparian rights, there is still, without question, a cost to their property values. And, you know, I, the question has to do with, would you have any experience in dealing with how to, you know, I hate to use the word rectify that, but, uh, how to deal with that and try to appease these property owners? And, you know, the, you have to compare the loss of the value of those twenty-six properties to the cost to the community as a whole to maintain or to improve those dams.
I don't have any experience with it. I guess my question would be is, you know, what kind of savings did the county realize, you know, as, as part of that project, if that's what you're telling me? The county saved some money there, that, I mean, that...
The, the repair costs were recommended in ten million dollars?
Yep.
Ballpark...
So, that's what the bottom line is, the county saved.
To, to, to improve the dams to where they would be able to continue to be operated, was about a ten million dollar project.
Okay.
Uh, no funding was available for that, other than out of the county's pocket. Uh, many organizations, from the Army Corps of Engineers to Trout Unlimited, have come forward with money to remove the dams.
So, you're actually getting money to remove the dams?
Yes.
Okay. That would be my first question, is, you know, I'd go to the homeowners and say, you know, what are you looking here? What are you looking for here, you know, and just basically have a negotiation with them, and see where they're coming from, what they're looking for, and then, you know, offer a counter. And then, again, it all boils down to open and honest communication and exchange of information.
Okay. Any other follow-up? Next question.
Aside from budget issues, name one or two of the most critical issues you see facing counties today.
Well, I know, again, in the ticker, I was reading about, uh, communication skills and, uh, people skills. So, I'm not sure where the issue is with the communication, if people just need to develop those skills. But, again, uh, you know, further education, professional training, you know, can help, help with those things too, and, uh, that's one thing I'm really big on. I'm actually, uh, one of my areas of specialties is writing, and I've even been asked by the Pentagon to teach training courses on writing, report writing, and awards index writing. And I don't know how familiar any of you are with that, but, it gets pretty complex at, uh, government level, and it's driven by regulations, so it involves a lot of research as well. So, again, like I said, I've, I've actually been teaching new human resource advisors how to write those reports, and the awards index. So, again, one of my big passions is continued education, and that's one of the reasons why I got my doctorate, and I think that's beneficial for anyone. And if that's an issue we're looking at with the employees, then, you know, that's one of the routes we can go to improve that.
Questions? All right, next question.
Switching over to some leadership questions. Define leadership in one sentence.
Leadership is the ability to get others to do what you say because they want to, not because they're told to.
Okay. Next question.
What is the most difficult management problem with employees that you've had to face, and how did you deal with it?
Okay, again, I'm, I'm going to go back to the bracket selfridge. When we found out we were getting bracked, I mean, basically, people broke down, especially people who are full-timers out there, uh, because they just, they felt like their life was over. They weren't going to relocate to Florida, they were settled in Michigan. So, they just, they didn't feel like they had a lot of options there. So, the way I dealt with it, again, is I offered them support in a variety of ways. First of all, I let them know, you know, we've still got a job to do here, but at the same time, you know, I empathized with them. I reached out to contact, contacts at headquarters and, and at units across the US, to try to find out what we could do to get them a position. As well as the, um, as well as war in Michigan, there's a, a tank armory there, um, it's TACOM, and it actually employs a ton of federal government employees. So, um, helping them with resume writing, interview preparation, so on, just to get them prepared for the next step in their lives, and, and really help them realize that all wasn't lost, just because we were, our unit was going away.
Okay. Follow-up? Next question.
How do you, how do you provide feedback to department heads?
I provide the, feedback in a variety of ways. It really depends on the situation. I don't use a blanket approach. Now, sometimes, uh, some situations require face-to-face, some require email, you know, if it's something simple, uh, some things, things in writing, uh, if it's formal. It really just depends on the individuals involved and the topics we're discussing.
Questions? Next question.
How would you characterize your leadership style?
My leadership style, I would say, is transformational. Uh, again, I, I like to get people to do what needs to be done because they want to, not because they have to, or they, they feel like they're in fear. I want them to have respect because they want to, not because I'm in a certain position or I tell them to. Um, I also like to empower people, but at the same time, I want to make myself available to them.
Okay. Next question.
What do you believe the county administrator can do to motivate employees or improve morale?
Well, I'd say the first thing, regardless of the position you're in, is to lead by example. Uh, don't ask someone to do something you wouldn't also be willing to do. Uh, along the same lines, specifically speaking about the county administrator position, is, ask people what motivates them, what makes them happy. I mean, that's the, the best way to get the most accurate information, and if you create an environment of trust, then they'll be honest with you, and that's really what you need in that type of situation, to truly understand and know your employees.
Okay. Next question.
How would you view your role as a public figure in this community, and what obligations do you feel that brings?
Well, if I was the leader of the county, obviously, that would be a huge obligation. And, uh, like I said in the first interview, and I was talking to a couple of people earlier, I moved here when I was eighteen by my own choice, and I've lived here ever since, so, this is my home. I'm not coming here for a job. I live here, and I have a, a lot of passion for this community. So, I feel like my obligation to this community is, is everything, and in that position, it would be even greater. Bottom line is, I would be responsible for this community, and, you know, that's the role I would assume and that I would take.
Okay. Comments? Moving on to communications and teamwork.
As a county administrator, you would be called upon to provide verbal and written reports to the Board of Commissioners. Explain your previous experience dealing with boards and commissions, and what kind of information would you say is important to provide regularly?
Okay, my experience with boards, I, I deal with boards all the time, whether it's with Coca-Cola or the National Guard. Again, we've got a lot of different councils on base. We've got the commanders, the chiefs, the first sergeants, junior enlisted, senior enlisted, diversity council, professional development council. I deal with all those groups on base on a variety of topics, whether it's, you know, providing training, or, uh, writing reports, uh, awards and decks, so on. Uh, can you repeat that one more time, Jen, please?
As the administrator, you would be called upon to provide verbal and written reports to the Board of Commissioners. Explain your previous experience dealing with boards and commissions, and what kind of information would you say is important to provide regularly?
Okay. And as far as, uh, information that's important to provide regularly, is obviously anything that impacts the county in, in a major way, uh, anything that the board requests, if there, if it's on a priority list, then that obviously should be communicated regularly. And, you know, anything that's ad hoc, that just comes up, you know, from time to time in the board requests.
Okay. Comments? All right, next question.
This position will be called upon to provide information to all forms of media, including print, television, and radio. Tell us about your experience within public relations and how you respond to criticism.
Well, as far as public relations go, I mean, I, I don't speak to the media with the military, because that's something that's actually forbidden unless you're part of public affairs.
Yeah. We would know that.
But, but I do speak regularly to, like I said, the commanders and the entire base population, so, communicating with people at all levels of hierarchy and, you know, across that base population has never been a problem for me. Uh, can you tell me the second part of that?
How you respond to criticism?
Oh, criticism, okay. I guess it depends on the criticism and whether it's constructive or not. Uh, but, I'll give you an example, when I first started off supervising people in, in the Air Force, this was probably, I don't know, fourteen years ago or so, I had to write an enlisted performance report, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, but, the military has a completely different writing style, a lot of ways, to any, anything you've ever experienced. And, when I got my first report back, I thought I did a great job on it, and it was all hacked up, red marks everywhere, and, basically, they don't want any white space. That's one example of just something that's seems crazy, but, you've got to expand the words out and just play with the words, so you get the right wording in there, so there's no white space. So, it was something at first that drove me nuts, but, the way I dealt with it is I reached out to the best writers on base, and just asked them, you know, how can I improve? And that's really, I mean, sometimes you've just got to swallow your pride and be humble about it, and say, what can I do to get better? And I think that's one of the things that's got me to where I am today, and that's why I've been requested to train people on how to write those kind of reports now, because, uh, you know, I did that.
Don't expect positive criticism from the media.
Oh, no, I, I, no, don't expect that from them.
Okay. Next question.
How do you perceive county commissioner involvement in the day-to-day operation of the county, including interaction with employees?
Well, it sounds like everything the employees do is driven by, you know, your priorities, so it sounds like that's a, a tight working relationship, and it's an environment of collaboration, and that's really what it boils down to, is working as a team, and understanding that your priorities are the employees' priorities, and proceeding accordingly.
Okay. Next question.
What do you believe is the purpose of county government?
County government, I mean, like any government, is to serve the people. And I think, uh, you know, that's one of the things that makes this area a great place to live. You can't put a quality, or a price tag on quality of living up here. And I know the government has a lot to do with it. And I know that's one of the, one of the goals in the strategic plan also, you know, is to, you know, the safety of the community members and quality of living, the services that are provided to them. And, you know, that's what the government's there for, that's why it exists.
Okay. Questions? All right, next question.
If you were offered and accepted this position, what would your first 30 days look like as administrator for Grand Traverse County?
The first 30 days would be to prioritize and figure out what's important to the commissioners and what we need to accomplish, short-term and long-term, and then create plans, strategic plans, to accomplish those goals, and then work on the execution of those plans.
Okay. Questions? All right, next question.
Tell us one to two achievements which you have contributed to your employer's success in the past few years.
Okay, I'll talk, first one is an award that Battle Creek Air National Guard Base received in 2009, and that was the Excellence in Diversity Award. And this is a nationwide award. All Air National Guard units are eligible to receive it. We actually won it and got presented at the National Guard Diversity Conference. We got presented the trophy and everyone, the commanders and, you know, the top people on the base were allowed to come up to get that award. Now, I had direct involvement in it because I'm the chairman of the Diversity Council, as well as providing diversity training, diversity and leadership training to the entire base population. Additionally, I wrote the award. So, that's really what pushes it because it's actually reviewed at the Pentagon and the only thing they see is that package that goes forward. So, we did a lot of great things at the base, I was directly involved in that, but I also was insured that, that was acknowledged by the Pentagon and we received that award.
All right. Next question.
What has been the biggest challenge in your career and how did you manage it?
I'd say one of the biggest challenges, probably the biggest challenge I have, I'm going to go back to the BRAC, is, is keeping people motivated and keeping morale high in the face of adversity. Because when things are going well, it's easy for people to do well and it's, it's easy to be happy and satisfied. But when things go south, that's when you're really tested as a leader. And the fact that I was able to keep everybody happy, or as happy as they could be, and actually help them along, and, and I know a lot of people still who have recovered from that and they're doing well, they've actually got promoted based on that. And I'd say that was the biggest challenge I faced. And getting through that, I mean, it helped me grow too a lot as a leader.
Okay. Comments? Next question.
What prompts you to leave your present job and why do you want to work for Grand Traverse County?
Okay. Well, right now, where I'm at with Coca-Cola, I'm at the top of where I can be and still be in this area. Now, I've been offered other positions in different areas of the country, but I don't want to leave this area. Like I said, I love this area, I have a passion for this area, I want my kids to grow up here. And, again, though, with a county job or a government job, period, the most meaningful jobs I've ever had are in the service of others. And that's what you do with the government. I mean, in the military, helping people out, you know, when I've deployed, you know, you know, helping the locals over there, I worked a lot with the locals when I deployed, helping them build their infrastructure and so on. Again, it goes back to serving others. It's the most meaningful experiences I've had in my life. So, that is why I would want to leave my current position and work for the government.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Henshaw and then Weelak.
Jim, through these questions, we've identified, as expected, some lack of experience, very specific. Do you feel qualified for this position?
I do. I know that one of, one of my strengths is research, and I know that wherever I was lacking, I would research, research, research. And, again, it goes back to a passion for education and knowledge and learning new things. And I learn things quickly, and that's the way I would approach that.
Okay. Mr. Weelak.
I understand that you're probably still in, in the Air National Guard. What time commitment does that take you away from the community?
Well, typically, it's obviously one, one weekend a month, for sure. And it's anywhere from two weeks on up a year. The nice thing about the job I'm in right now, the special duty assignment, I'm non-deployable right now. So, because my position's funded by the Pentagon and I work for the base, the Pentagon just said, no, that position can't deploy. So, it's really up to me. It would be a weekend a month, two weeks a year, minimum. So, if that's all I wanted it to be, then that's all it would be.
We have a number of county employees that have been now deployed multiple times. So, you know, you, you can't, you can't think about an administrator that's going to be gone, you know, we had a-
Three years?
Public Service Director that was deployed, what, three times?
Yeah.
We got a sergeant in the jail that's been deployed twice or three times.
Well, the nice thing about being in the Air National Guard too, as opposed to the National Guard, I've deployed four times, every time it's been on a volunteer basis. So, I've never been activated. And like I said, the position I'm in now is a non-deployable asset.
I'd like to maybe drill down a little bit deeper in terms of your motivation. When you first saw the, I'm assuming you saw it in the local newspapers or online or whatever, the ticker, you know, if you're a fan of that. And knowing that you're probably at the top of your career here in Traverse City and you're, and I could understand your willingness not to move because of the beauty of the area and, and I can understand that as well. But choosing a high-level government position within the local community and how, you know, what drove you to think, in your thinking about applying for the position?
Well, like I said, the most meaningful jobs I've ever had have been serving others. And I want to know that what I do is meaningful and it means something to people around me. Every job I've had, the best thing about it's been the people. So, like I said, serving people is at the top of my list. And, again, I want to know that I'm doing something meaningful, meaningful for my community. And that's one reason why I continue to serve in the Air National Guard as well, because I know that's for my country, but it's for the community as well.
I'd like, I'd like to just follow up with that and I'd say, I have, I have noted the civic involvement and I am impressed with what you've done with our community and with the, with the places that you've been involved in.
I appreciate that.
I personally would like to thank you for your, your service to our country-
Thank you.
And your ongoing dedication in, in your continuation of part-time service to our country. And the, you know, the first, what I'm viewing as a first-class individual that takes, takes, takes his responsibilities seriously and it sounds like you've had, you know, a wonderful progression of experiences within the military.
Thank you.
But I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have any questions of us?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Okay, first question is, what are the most important things that the new administrator needs to address in the first three months?
Okay, that's been a common question and I'll paraphrase that for you. We are in the process of, obviously, some turnover. As commissioner, I believe we did notify you that we have some elected officials that are retiring. And our finance director is, is running for county treasurer and we still need to figure that whole component out in terms of his responsibility as treasurer and, and if he could play a role still in the finance area. And we held back on our strategic planning, which ended in June of, June of, at the end of this year. It's been a three-year plan. And we're beginning our budget cycle for 2013 in June with our department head. So, you know, we would see that, you know, a new administrator coming in would have probably a pretty strong 30-day orientation session in terms of getting to know the commissioners, getting to know the department heads, getting the review of the operations, the budget, some of the challenges of the downtrending in revenue that we're looking at. And then, we need to focus on our three-year strategic plan, our, our work plan for the remaining part of the year and next year. And I think that would be the primary focus at this point. I mean, there are some, some day-to-day issues that need to be, you know, ongoing, that need to be taken care of, but our inter-administrator and our human resource manager are kind of doing a team effort to do that. So, it'd be, there would be a briefing on that, but, so, your, your plate would be full, you know, for the first 90 days, just going through that whole process. So, that's how I would identify that.
Okay. How about 12 months, the first 12 months?
Well, it would be a continuation of what, you know, I've overviewed with you, is that, you know, that would be the implementation of the budget, implementation of the strategic plan, and a further relationship building with the department heads, the employees, and the commission, and the community leaders.
Okay. And what are the performance expectations of this position over the first 12 months?
Well, we have an actual performance evaluation form that the, the commission does annually on the county administrator. And it's in a variety of areas, which, most of it, most of which we've talked about today in terms of budgeting, experience, and those kinds of things, tasks, and how well we completed our plan, and, you know, those kinds of things. So, we have an annual process that the board goes through. And of course, with every candidate we're interviewing, some have extensive experience in government, some have some, some come from city government, which is a different style, some have, in your case, not government experience, but related experience. So, I'm sure the board would take all those measures under consideration for its first evaluation. We do that at the end of the year.
Well, and maybe if we could expand on that a little bit. As part of our strategic plan and our annual planning process, we develop a work plan in cooperation with the administrator, and then we receive quarterly reports of how that's progressing.
Okay.
And that, I think that helps the administrator and helps the Board of Commissioners to-
That makes sense, constant feedback.
Chris has a comment.
Commissioner Max. With the red cup. Back in the, back in the parking lot. Jim, I am looking at your, your resume and Financial Management Reservist of the Year, Financial Services Distinguished Graduate, Financial Management Honor Graduate. You like numbers.
I do.
You also, though, are a human resource advisor. I, I guess, do you like the balance? Do you like-
Actually, I've, I've got a, a good example for you. Have any of you gone through Four Lenses of Leadership training? Basically, what it does is it categorizes you based on your strengths, what you like, and there's different categories, different colors. There's gold, blue, green, and orange.
Oh, yes, I've done that.
Okay, so you know that.
Yes, I'm, I'm two colors, I'm a blend.
I was two colors also. I was gold, which is very analytical, structured, you know, you need that order. And then I was also blue, which means that you totally care about people. So, I was the same number for both of those. So, I do like that balance. I mean, I, I love interacting and dealing with people, but I am a numbers guy too. It's just how I'm made up. So, I do like that balance. That's why I like to do different things and I try to branch out and, you know, vary what I'm doing, because I do enjoy that.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
What types of skills you not already have on board that you're looking to fill with a new hire?
I think this, you know, the, the questionnaire was really built around the skill level that we're looking for. And we're, demands we, you know, we're, when we first took on the advertisement, we were open to not only people with county experience, but city experience or township experience, but other types of experiences that could equate to, you know, some of the basic operations of county government. So, that's how we handled the, the application process. And what we're trying to gauge in our interview process are the strengths of experience, budget, leadership management, supervision, communication, teamwork, and commitment and culture. So, that's how we devised the question, that's how we devised our rating system for the candidates. So, we're looking for strengths within all those categories.
Okay. What kind of processes do you have in place to help the administrator work collaboratively? It seems to be a lot of what it is, you know, doing-
Yeah, and, and we, we're very, the structure of the county commission in terms of how it works, really, there's an open-door policy with the previous county administrators, the past two. We had one that served 28 years and the last one served 10. So, commissioners should come in and, you know, and make an appointment and discuss personal things with them with regard to the county commission. And we meet every Wednesday in the evening and we have a set agenda. A commissioner can put an agenda item on any of the meetings for discussion. So, there's a real close working relationship with the, with the county commission and the county administrator, not only on a day-to-day basis, but a weekly basis. And then, you know, we engage with the department heads during the, these weekly meetings as well. And so, there's really a inner coordination, communication piece between the administrator, the department head, staff, that often come in and do presentations and stuff. So, we have a, I would consider us a very close working network between staff, department heads, and the administrator.
All right. That's, that's all I have for questions.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for a candidate? Well, we certainly thank you for coming in and sharing your, your vision and where you want to go with your next career move. And we thank you for, again, your years of service with our country. And we'll let you know, we're, this is our last interview, and we have six candidates to evaluate, and we're going to attempt to discuss a process that we want to go through after we conclude this interview, in terms of how we want to approach the candidates that have been interviewed and what process we want to use in terms of trying to identify the top candidates or a candidate. So, we'll let you know.
Thanks to everyone for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Let's take a break.[1522.25]
Another round and pick your man.
Well, I would like to at least argue my point.[6.56][6.59](laughter)
We could defer to another meeting.
Well, no, wait.
No, well, what is your point, Chris?
Well, no, I mean, why I, why my number one choice would be Gitz. And I would like to hear why someone else's number one choice is something else. You know, I'm open to discussion here.
Can we do a round robin so everyone can just...
Let's start with Commissioner Gilman and then we'll just go around.
Okay.
I'll tell you, my, right now, and I do, I would be acceptable to other candidates, but I'll tell you, right now, Jeff Naftal, this morning, probably impressed me the most. And I should, I should point out, he is not the person on paper, I didn't, he wasn't even in my top at all. I had given him no, no points originally, or at least that I can, that I can, he was low on the list. He has the experience, he has all the experience that would fit well with our, with our particular administration. He does have the budget experience. And, and the thing that I think scared me the most, and you actually brought it up, Commissioner Inman, is the jumping, the resume building, so to speak. But I think that happens to be more circumstantial than intentional. I, I like his type of leadership. I think he gives, gives, he offers an opportunity, he has offered an opportunity for correction in his administrations, in those places where he had positions of power, but then he is not afraid to ultimately make the decision that is necessary. I did like the way that he expressed his, his communication skills and his team building. And frankly, I think he would be a good fit for the community. I think he'd be a long-term resident here. And, and I think, and many of them would be, I think, who'd want to not be here once they get here. I also think, in the, in the broad picture, I think we could probably negotiate a bargain out of it, because I think we'd get a highly qualified individual, a highly capable individual at, from a position of being in between jobs. It puts us in the driver's seat as far as offering a package. I think it, it puts us in the right place, at the right cost, and we get a good deal out of it.
All right. Any other follow-up comments on the second or third choice that you were done?
Um, I think, I think Dave Benda, though he isn't my top three, I think Dave Benda is certainly qualified. I, I sense a personality.
Yeah.
That's not, I'm not comfortable with.
I do, too.
And so, I didn't, I didn't pick him. I think, as far as, otherwise, I liked, I liked the first candidate that we interviewed, which was Rob Hilliard. I thought he was pretty competent, right down the line, and capable, and did have the appropriate experience, and, I think, was personable enough that he could work well with any of us.
Okay. Commissioner Max Malar.
I like, I was surprised that I liked Mr. Gitz so, so much. I didn't pick him initially, and...
May I ask a very quick question?
Certainly.
Because we obviously all have this, you know, you and I both have this Freeport connection with him.
That has nothing to do with it.
I know, but it seemed to me that you were prepared to dislike.
I was. I was prepared to dislike Mr. Gitz. I really was, exactly. There were, but I, I have to tell you, I went back over his resume again last night. This man is extremely intelligent. He went to Northwestern. You don't get in there by being stupid. He said he was results-oriented. He's one of the only ones who sat there with no notes. Dennis used to be able to do that. And I think Mr. Gitz will, will do that as well. He talked about tying the budget to performance. He talked about being fiscally responsible. He's done multi-year budgets. He, as far as I was concerned, when he talked about fund balance, he gave the best answer of anybody. He said it's a cushion in economic cycles for emergencies and affects your bond rating. He's the only one that gave those, those three answers. He has turned financial drains in a community, and I checked this out last night with my other half, the Raleigh Building in Freeport, into, you know, a tax-contributing building. He's got, he's big on documentation. He knows the law. He will be up to speed on the law, on Michigan law, I think, in, in less than 60 days. He under, he talked about delegating with accountability. And I really would like to see us have an administrator that delegates with accountability. I think that he'll do that. And as Commissioner Richardson said, I, I really was prepared to dislike him, and I did a complete 180. And another answer that he gave that I really liked was when he said, it was, it's important to avoid the, even the appearance of impropriety. I think he'll do that. I think he'll be a credit to Grand Tavras County. And I, in all light, I, I very, I have a challenger in November. I might not be here, depending upon what voters decide. Who would I want to leave this county in the hands of? Because, I, I mean, I'm a lifelong resident. I do care about this county, and I feel very confident that Mr. Gitz, I, I could sleep at night.
Okay. Any other comments regarding?
No, that's it.
Okay. Commissioner, please.
Benda, Benda didn't impress me at all. If the board was to select Benda, I think you'd just get an in-place administrator, a name-only. I, I didn't see any initiatives or excitement on his part. He wanted to rest on his laurels, if you will. He, my opinion, I thought he was a know-it-all. I think some of the time, he was fudging his answers. I, I just wasn't impressed with the man. So, I think that's enough said about him. I have to agree with the earlier comments on Naftal. I like his style. I think he'd be good for the, the county. And, yeah, let me see here. And I think he was really in earnest, or another thing, Naftal, if we select him, he'll be here. I truly believe that. Gitz, I liked his presentation, I liked his style, I liked all of that, but you know, when you look at his resume, he's a job hopper. He has been, well, I even wrote it down, starting way back in 90, he spent three years, next job, well, he was three years as an associate attorney, four years as an attorney-at-law, eight years as the mayor of Freeport. Then he was two years in the city of Urbana, Urbana, three years administrator in Prairie DuChene, one year administrator in the town of Campbell, and he's back to be an attorney. Like I said, I liked his style and all of that, but I think he'd be a short-term, I wouldn't even give him five years, I'd bet you'd be gone in three, four years.
Okay.
So, I think, Naftal, I think would be my selection.
Okay. Commissioner Lebov.
Well, I, I really liked Dave Benda, and I liked him before. You know, there's a second when I was here earlier. I thought he's got some creative ideas that he can bring to our county, and he's, he is a leader, and so I was very impressed with that. On the same token, Jim Gitz did not impress me. I would not want to see an attorney here as our leader. I think that clouds me a little bit. But also, you know, I had a friend of mine who used to live down there, and she said, "Don't hire him." Because her experience was that he, he comes across extremely well, but his ability to get you where you want to go is not going to be there.
Okay.
So, that was, you know, that was, you know, somebody that I knew locally that did that. As far as Jeffrey Naftal, you know, I thought he did an excellent job, and I think Rob Hilliard also did an excellent job. So, you know, Dave Benda would be my number one choice.
All right. Commissioner Thomas.
Well, I, I scored these all on these sheets, and Benda and Gitz come out the tops for me, and Naftal come third. I gotta say that my problem with Benda, even though I think he's probably the most qualified, is I think he's got a little arrogance to him. And I don't know how well he'd get along with the 500 people we kept talking about. On the other hand, when I listen to Naftal, I think he'd get along with everybody, and this is something we gotta consider, is how well they're going to get along with people, because the biggest part of that job is getting along with people.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock.
Well, I had Benda number one for a couple of reasons. Obviously, he's more experienced than some of the others. He's all the way around from county government, he's got more experience. Yeah, he's got some arrogance to him. I'm suspecting that probably I do, too, so that doesn't bother me a great deal.
We all have a touch of that.
You know, you can't, you can't sit here and not have some of that. You know, I think the other thing that is important to me is the question that I ask about how can you help Grand Tavras County be a leader in our community, our state, and our nation? He already has the connections with the legislature. He has the connections at MAC. He's involved with NACO. You know, he's going to keep us there. And, you know, I, Jim Gitz was, well, he was number three on my original list. Yeah, you know, I think Gitz can do a good job. You know, he's a typical attorney, you know, he's, he's bound to be able to talk well, he's bound to be able to talk without notes. I questioned a little bit the depth of some of his answers, but, you know, I, that's kind of where I was at. I had, I had Benda first, and I'm sure that Benda can come here, and we won't miss a step.
Okay. Commissioner Hetchell.
Going into this process, I found myself putting very little emphasis on experience, because I really wanted to get a, you know, private sector and
Yeah.
...public sector, you know, openness to apply. But, you know, having gone through the process and being where I am now, I put a huge emphasis on experience, just listening to the answers they gave. And based on that, you know, Rob Hilliard, I thought, did an excellent job, he's, he's got the right initials.[821.37][821.40](laughter) RH. But, no, really, very dynamic individual, but he lacks the county-specific experience that other candidates had, and so he was my third of my top three. Jim Gitz, Gitz was my, second of my top three, based on, again, the experience. You know, I liked him, but he seemed to kind of ramble on a little bit, and had trouble staying on topic as, as we talked, so he kind of wandered off-topic a lot and then came back. I think we all do that. My number one pick was Dave Benda, for all the right reasons, and, you know, I definitely saw that hint of arrogance that reminded me a little of myself. You know, we all have a little, little touch of that. But when it came down to his connections with the state level, his involvement with MAC, NACO, I think he'd be very supportive of that. You know, and just, just look what, you know, our involvement with MAC, for example, kind of led to us having some contacts, and just what we saved in our health insurance for employees, more than pays for everything we spent on MAC and NACO for 30 to 50 years, you know, just, just in that one connection. So, Naftal was really, to me, was lackluster. He didn't know why he lost his last job.
Mm-hmm.
You know? I, I don't, I don't give any support to the victim mentality of, well, they just got rid of me and it wasn't my fault. You did something, and if you didn't know what it was, you should have known. So, you know, I think he, he could do the job, I felt he was capable, but I, I felt that knocked him down a notch, just the lack, I guess I'd call it a lack of excellence. You know, I liked, I liked the excellence factor of, of Gitz and Benda.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
I picked Gitz first and Benda second. I picked Hall third, and I, I still think he's an interesting choice. No one else is talking about him, so I'm not even, you know, I'm not even going to pursue that. He's sort of an outlier choice, because he doesn't have the direct local government experience that the other candidates do. I think he's a real bright guy, he might be real good. I'm still not sure why he wants to leave what he's doing and come here and do this, but anyway. Naftal, I liked a lot better than I thought I would. I honestly, I didn't, I didn't care much for his resume, I didn't, actually, I didn't like...
Exactly.
I didn't like the way he wrote his cover letter.
Yeah.
First, let me tell you about my creativity, next, let me, it's like, whoa, you know, way too many words. But he was actually, I was actually pretty impressed with him through the interview. My one problem with him is there isn't as much experience there. He hasn't been in charge of anything more than a very small city. In South Carolina, where I guess he only served for a year or two, he was only the deputy administrator, not, you know, not, not the guy in charge. And I think we're looking, I think we need someone with a little more chops than that. Honestly, at his age, I'm biased, he hasn't advanced further in his career than he has, but that's, you know, that's another thing. If there was a huge consensus for Naftal, I'd be okay with it, honestly. Benda, Benda has come in second in a lot of these horse races, going back to ours 10 years ago, going back to the one in Oregon where we lost Dennis, going back to some of the other ones I've seen. And one thing, you start looking at this stuff, is the same names keep popping up over and over again. After we interviewed, I think I understand why. You know, there's a little, little bit of an abrasive personality at times. I think he's a real bright guy, I think he'd be very capable, and if the board thinks that he, you know, he should be the guy, I certainly wouldn't have any problem with that. I think Gitz is, I think Gitz could, Gitz could do very well, and I'd be happy with either choice. Speaking to a comment you were making, Christine, out in the hall, I heard you say, you were talking about Mr. Batorth and his financial skills. And I agree that financial skills and number skills are very important, and I certainly pride myself on my own abilities with numbers, but when you come right down to it, what we need is somebody with really good political skills, because the county administrator, when you look at people that he actually supervises, and people that he has to deal with, budget he's imposing on people that he has no authority on, other than, other than the...
Well, I was thinking, actually, what I was thinking of is when Dean leaves (laughter).
Well, yeah, whatever. I mean, even then, there may be questions about experience in a, in a public environment, but, but the point is, is that
Yes.
You know, our, our county administrator is the leader, but also, in many ways, the mediator-in-chief, and political skills are really important.
You know, I struggled with this. My top three, without categorizing, were Benda, Gitz, and Naftal. I think Benda brings the biggest bat to the county commission. He's got the most experience as a finance manager, and a county administrator in Clinton, and he did do 10 years in Midland County. I know of his reputation in Midland, and I know of his representate, his, his reputation at MAC and NACO. He's very well thought of among those two organizations as a leader, as an innovator, as someone that is assertive, always volunteers to step forward, to help out on a statewide basis or a national basis, on various topics. He's got probably the most experience in county government. He would, upfront, he would be our biggest bang, because he could walk in, there would not be a learning curve, he would know all of the operations, it would just be a matter of knowing, just getting introduced to the individuals, and developing a relationship with some of those folks. He's got, he, he knows the majority of the legislature, and he's very tight with Michigan Association of Counties, like I said, so he would, he would have an edge up among the other candidates in terms of, of the experience level. I did pick up, you know, his style of interviewing, and that, I think we had, he was, I believe, our second choice, or close to our second choice 10 years ago, when this opening occurred, he had a couple of years in Midland, and he really wanted to get up here. And, you know, if Dennis had not applied, I think, I'm pretty certain the board would have picked Dave Benda to be the next county administrator. But Dennis came in with such excellent presentation skills, and his, his ability to pull you in and engage you in a conversation was over-compelling. I mean, he, he was the guy, he had the experience, but, but he had just great communication skills, and he could just, politically, he could just pull you in and just, just sell you. So, that's why I think Dennis got, got the selection over Benda during the last time. And I thought that Benda's interview skills were, if there's only, if there's one thing lacking that Benda has, is that his ability to interview. I think, you know, I almost felt like sitting him over and just saying, you know, what you need to do is you need to have like a softer presentation and approach to, you know, how you, how you interview, but once you get beyond the interview process, I think Benda brings the biggest bat, the most experience, and could bring back a lot of great things that have been tried around the state, that he's been involved in, that could benefit the county the most. And I think the commission would just have to work with his style of communication, and I think we could correct that in a fairly short period of time, but, so I had Benda number one, I had Gitz, I was just really surprised how well he interviewed without notes, as someone else said. And he had, he had basically Dennis Loy's interview skills. I mean, he sat there without any notes and just smoothly answered all the questions and was very competent. And I wasn't quite sure about Naftal, and, because if you look at his resume, it was just all over the board. So, I guess if I was looking for the top two, I'd pick Benda, and then, and as a second, I'd pick Gitz. So, right now, we have one, two, three, three that thought Naftal was the top candidate. We have one, two, three, four, that thought Benda was the top candidate, and we have one, two, few people thought Gitz was the top candidate. It's kind of where we're at right now.
So, we have top three candidates, essentially?
We, I think we have a top three candidates.
Let's ask them back.
Can you, can you give me one, one question
Commissioner Wheelock, and then, Commissioner, please.
That we haven't already asked?
Well, it's not that I would ask them a question, I would be interested in seeing how they interact with the public, and I think Commissioner Richardson's suggestion originally, that we didn't, couldn't do because flight arrangements were already made. I think Commissioner Thomas's statement regarding Mr. Benda's relationship skills, I think, are important. I, I found him quite arrogant as well, and that bothers me. I would, for that reason, I would not support his selection. But, and nor would I vote to, today, to
Okay.
Offer him a job. That doesn't mean that he doesn't have good skills, I just haven't seen them (laughter), at least in, in my opinion.
Okay. Dick?
Well, one thing, I would be opposed to getting, dragging them back here for two or three questions.
Yeah.
I don't think that's necessary. I, I would be, I could go along with any of the top three. Whether we should vote today or not, I don't know, but I, but I would be comfortable with any of them. One maybe more than the other, but majority rules, so...
Wheelock, did you have your hand up? Okay. Felice, did you have your hand up?
Richardson.
Yes, and then we'll go to Richardson and Hetchell.
I have to agree with Dick, you know, I think he's arrogant. And like I said earlier, if you want a status quo manager, Benda would be your man. I, I didn't, there wasn't any excitement in his, in his presentation or interview. He didn't offer any new solutions or innovative ways of doing things. And I wonder, I, I don't think I have any question as to why he comes in second in his interviews. I think he does have an abrasive personality, and after having Rothschild's here for 26 years, and Dennis Loy for 10, I don't think we want a contro, controversial person like Benda, somebody that rubs people wrong. I think that he has to work with staff, I know staff pretty well. I think there'd be some friction there. I, myself, prefer Naftal.
Me?
I realize Benda's a local guy, or Michigan guy, but like I said, I'm looking down the road in status quo, I'm not interested in.
Okay. We had Richardson.
Jen, how long does it take to do the background checks that...
Um, the criminal check won't, won't take long. It's the references that might take a little while, calling, you have to play phone tag generally with some people's references, but, I mean, we could, I don't know, a day or two, two or three days, something like that.
Do you think it would be, I mean, I'm not asking you, Jen, I'm, the rest of the board now, do you think it would be useful to run the background checks and the references on the three candidates before we move forward?
That's not a bad idea.
That's not a bad idea.
Consider it public safety?
And then we could bring it back to public safety.
So, do we have the motion, then?
One could be in order.
Move we do a background check on the candidates, Naftal, Gitz, and Benda, for presentation and the public health and safety, this next month, to...
Is there support?
I'll, I'll support it.
Support for Richardson. Discussion.
I mean, it's possible that one of the three might just drop out of this.
That's also right.
You know, we, we might not want to narrow it to one and then find out that there's something wrong with that person.[1718.37][1718.40](laughter) Or something we don't like about that person.
I think that's a great...
And that also gives us time to think about it
Yes.
For a week.
That's reasonable.
I, I think that's a great suggestion.
I think that's a good idea.
That, let's identify the top three, where we think we're at, do the background checks, and maybe something will come out.
Oh, yes, your, your, your motion didn't name the three. Do you want to name the three?
I did name them.
You did.
Gitz and Benda.
Thank you.
Naftal and Benda. Okay.
I think that's a great solution. It also gives us more time to think about the process that we went through, and it will give us additional information.
And I have one final question.
Yes.
Do you have, have all these three provided the references? It's just a question, do you check them, or do you have to contact the candidates to get references?
I am not sure off the top of my head.
Okay.
If...
Well, I think you could probably contact them.
Gitz doesn't have references on the back of his...
You need to get something from Naftal.
Gitz...
Yeah. I, I think you could contact the candidates.
I think I have to con... I think I have to contact, contact, I know I have to contact Getz.
That would just be.
I would have to contact, actually, all of them because they don't provide their, their information to do a background criminal check until we're serious in the process because that involves a social security number and a birth date, so I would be contacting all three of them anyway.
Anyways, okay, all right. Any further discussion on the motion?
Do you believe it's capable to have that by next Wednesday, a week?
Absolutely. I, I don't know if I'll have, be able to have it in the packet, though, for you, because that's, would have to be in by tomorrow night, Thursday morning, but as soon as I have it, I can certainly email it out. It's just a matter of, that, that phone tag can tend to get, you know, a little daunting, but absolutely, as soon as I have it done, I can email it out.
The suggestion is if she can't get that done in time, then we'll have it, an R M or other than.
I can have it by public health and safety. It just might not be in the packet.
Okay.
Well, my comment is I think that's an excellent suggestion, how to handle the top three, because, you know, I think the references are gonna, are gonna be an important factor in terms of our decision. You know, you know, somebody could come in and do a great presentation, and we do some background checking, and there could be.
Oh, no.
Couple, couple nightmare situations that, that we don't know about. Okay.
Maybe you could just check the post office wall.
Commissioner, please.
Jen, when you do the references, you only do the ones that they supply?
It depends. You try and find if they've got, like, a prior supervisor or something like that, and I guess it, it depends is kind of the best answer. Yes, we kind, the ones that they supply, and then if we can find another one, we will.
Well, I, I think, because I really think it's important, you know, a person certainly isn't going to give you a bad reference.
Right.
I think perhaps past employers, you know, even 10 years ago or 15 years ago, or associates. I think we should, I think it's a serious enough decision for this board to have everything available to us, and I think we ought to dig a little deeper.
If we can, there's, some employers will not provide info, well, 10 years ago, they'll, they will say they can't recall. So there's a, it's a fine line if, if the person's, you know, still there, and I certainly do my best for that, but just kind of a warning, sometimes we get, you know, that was so long ago, I can't remember, or that was so long ago in their career, that was before they were in like a management or a leadership role, and so it's hard to connect with what they're applying for now with a reference that they knew 10 years ago if they haven't kept in touch, but we'll certainly, certainly do our best with that.
Commissioner Thomas.
Well, besides, you'd be pushing her timeline out for public safety if we did all that.
Well, do the best you can.
It would be, but you could, you could always have him change it. He's the chairman. She says, I can't, don't have it done and done.
Okay.
We can move it down.
All right. Any other further discussion on the motion? There are none. Let's do a roll call, though.
Commissioner Gilman?
Yes.
Hetchell?
Yes.
Lemko?
Yes.
Max Bowers?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yep.
Wielak?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Hey, Brian, I was just about ready to call you. I hope you got the last motion.
Mr. Chairman, the motion.
Our motion adjourned.
After public comment?
We did public. We did public comment.
This was an addition.
Wielak, second by Lemko, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.